Today's date is December 5th and it is 6:49 PM. Apologies for the late start. I'll go ahead and start with introductions. So to my left is Rob Trasolo, Planning Board Member, Steve Padfield, Planning Board Member, Peter Coffin, Planning Board Member. I'm Robin Dugay, acting as Chair tonight. To my right is Robin Carter, Land Use Administrator, Chris Bashaw, Selectmen's Representative, and Glenn Greenwood, thank you. I keep wanting to say Copman, but you're Glenn Greenwood.
(Laughter).
Town Planner. I knew that was gonna happen as soon as I rounded the corner. So tonight we have a number of proposed zoning amendments that we're hoping to place on the ballot for the town election in March. So what I'm hoping we can do is just kind of run through if anyone wants copies of the document that we're referencing. Robin was nice enough to make extra copies for everybody at the end of the table. So the first article falls under preamble two, definitions. And based on previous meetings, the proposal is to review, uh, review, remove the definition of family. So what previously read, "One or more persons related by blood, adoption, or marriage, living and cooking together as a single housekeeping unit," or "A number of persons but not exceeding two adults, living and cooking together as a single housekeeping unit, shall be deemed to constitute a family." So again, the proposal is that that would be removed. Any, go ahead.
Yeah, if you want to explain that because you did this.
Yes, and so this came about due to the definition of family being in direct contradiction with a bunch of federally protected definitions and items that fell under the definition of family. And it was brought to our attention that if we ever tried to implement or enforce this definition, we would lose legally and spectacularly. So it was, in order to not be able to, there are so many hundreds of different definitions that could be compiled instead of trying to include all comprehensive language, but some glaring examples, just so people have kind of understand. And there were no provisions in here. There's now protections for foster children, which wouldn't fit under our definition. I mean, it included things like adoption, but I look back to an example I'll use myself is when my wife and I moved to town, we had a large home, no kids. Had somebody from work live with us. Well, technically, we would have violated the definition of family because it was more than two adults that were not, all three of us definitely weren't married. So there's just a lot of ambiguity, and we felt it would be easier to remove that, a definition that pigeonhole us into something, trying to comply with a bunch of protected definitions, both at the federal and state level.
Before we go to any other board comments, any comments from the public on that? Go ahead if you want to come up. I know you know the drill, but say your name, address.
Push the button to make the microphone.
Hi. But I don't need to hold it, right? I just push it and it's green, so I'm all.
Yeah, so procedurally, on every single article, we need to offer a public comment period, so you should open for public comment, ask for public comment, then close it before the board makes any motions or votes.
Okay. So we will open for public comment.
So would that be for each article on the agenda?
We're just gonna have to go article by article. So, yeah.
So there would be public comment for each one?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm concerned about removing the definition of family, since we use the term "family" throughout our ordinances, single-family, residential, et cetera. It's in there many, many times. And so I did a little research on the definition of family, and there's a very narrow one used by the U.S. Census Bureau, defines a family as "a group of two people or more, related by birth, marriage, or adoption, or residing together." So that makes it good to count noses for a census. And since families are becoming more complex and difficult to classify, we probably don't want to go with something as narrow as that. But I believe the definition that we have, or even with a little tweak, might work, so that people who consider themselves family could be included in that definition. It's not just two or more people living together, which could be an apartment. And we use the word "family" over and over again. So I'm sort of wondering, Chris, maybe I'm not allowed to address different specific people, but I'm wondering, who advised you that our definition was indefensible legally? And why would we remove the definition, or some definition, for "family" when we use it throughout our ordinances? So our goal in discussions with the HDC and the Planning Board is to get rid of ambiguity and be as clear as we can, who's gonna decide "family" when we look at our different ordinances?
Can I just get you to state your name and address for the record? Sorry.
I know the drill, but I didn't do it.
It's okay.
Virginia Morse, 188 Main Street. Not necessarily representing the historic District Commission, however, once you're on a board, you speak.
Yeah. Does anyone want to respond to that?
I would say, yeah, I ran just a couple scenarios that we had seen possibly coming up in the town, and I ran it by the town's legal counsel, and they said, yeah, our current definition was really indefensible. And then we just started looking around at different definitions. So you may say the U.S. Census, but then some would say you should use the Housing and Urban Development, and then some would say you should use other definitions with other federally protected classes.
So a simple phrase such as "and others who consider themselves family" would work. I think that we could add to it comfortably. Otherwise, when there's some question about, is this a family in this residence according to the different ordinances we have, who's going to say if it is or it isn't? Where is there going to be some kind of support or non for that?
We had that very discussion with council, and the response was that when you, when you have, when you're faced with coming up with whether or not a unit serves as a family, you look at it independently each time. If it's an enforcement issue and you're wondering if that qualifies as a family, it's a, it's a pass the straight face test. Because otherwise, what we, what we run into is that your definition doesn't include everything. And if you say, "Or any other people join together," then you've essentially, your definition just says everybody anyway.
No, because I, my idea is "consider themselves family," which is definitely not just two or three or four people living together. They might not consider themselves family. And who's going to make the judgment whether it's family or not?
But, but Virginia, if you say that, if you say that phrase, those that consider themselves family?
Yes.
Well, when they come to the.
They're gonna, they're gonna come in here and say, "Us 20 people living in this single-family residence consider ourselves family." And they're gonna use that so that there is no ability to make a decision.
You won't then be saying, oh, but so you're not saying you're family because you're related, or because you were adopted, you're saying you consider yourself family, which quite frankly, there are probably hundreds of examples of that verity in Kingston right now. People that consider themselves family, and they are right now, and they're not considered family in three months.
Okay. So my question is, who is the decision-maker about whether this group of people living in this particular part of town, in this particular residence, consider themselves family? Who's going to make that decision?
It's gonna be one of these situations where if an issue pops up, it's gonna be a totality of circumstances, and whoever the governing boards are at that time, they're probably gonna have to say, hey, this is the situation we have, it's clear as mud, and it'll give the town's legal counsel. But if you pigeonhole into a certain definition, it either falls in it or it doesn't, and you're allowing the, because like Glenn said, if you say, "People who consider themselves family," so everyone that doesn't want to be held to a standard is just gonna come in and say, "We consider ourselves family."
If you have a definition of family that is fairly broad, but never would con, include everybody, then if you had a specific example in which someone said, "But we are," it seems to me that a variance could be granted for that particular condition, or that particular living situation. Otherwise, it's totally arbitrary, depending on the board that's sitting here.
So as an aviance, a variance is just dependent on a different board that happens to be sitting.
But at least it backs up and gives some support to us using the word "family" throughout our ordinances. I don't know about regulations, but I know that's a planning board decision, but my opinion is that it is very, we've tried very hard not to be subjective in our rulings, and yet, without any wording at all, I think we're really shooting ourselves in the foot worse than if we give no definition at all.
Virginia, I agree that it makes it difficult when you use the word "family" in an ordinance, and the perfect example is "single-family residential." And I think that the interpretation there is that if you have one kitchen, you know, and, and a living facility, a single-family living facility is basically one habitating unit with a single kitchen and, you know, and so forth. So that if you have multiple kitchens, such as an ADU, you, that's a separate living unit. And so that perhaps the definitions of the, of the terms should be referred to the type of living units. Single-family residential means, you know, a house that has a single kitchen, basically, I think is the real crux of that. But we heard some of the legal definitions went on ad nauseam for a long paragraph about all the inclusivity of what, who could be carried. And I think that your census one, in fact, if you could reread that one sentence that ends "and other persons living together" may have equally broad definition, so that, so that people who are living in a, in a constant, a common unit, you know, regardless, you know, not paying rent to somebody else or whatever, would be considered a single-family unit, regardless of their legal status of marriage.
Then let's use that definition.
Okay, so can, can you just read that last part?
A family is a group of two people or more, one of whom, I left this out before, excuse me, one of whom is the householder, so this is considered a head of house, related by birth, marriage, adoption, and, excuse me, or adoption, and residing together.
And residing together.
Yes.
Okay, so it does include relations. Okay, I thought it said "or residing together" when you read it the first time.
I might have read it wrong. Or adoption and residing together. So it really is quite narrow.
That is very narrow. So I think that would have the same, same issues as our current ordinance.
Well, that's my opinion, and I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't find some definition that is broad enough to include many, and narrow enough to support what we have for our ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
She told me to state what.
I was just looking up definitions to see if there was anything.
Would you be so kind as to state your name?
Oh, yes, I'm terribly sorry. My name's Ellen Faulkner. It's F as in Frank, A-U-L-C-O-N-E-R.
Where do you live?
Kingston. Under your definition, so dwelling unit, "single family," it says "a detached building designed for or occupied exclusively by one family." So that's still in their definition. So I think that, you know, I understand what you're saying, but that there should be somewhere or someplace that gives people a clue what a family is, or maybe you want to just, you know, "by one societal unit," which is Webster's Dictionary also says that, because you keep, we keep using "family," but it is confusing for people trying to enforce these ordinances because there's no definition for what a family is. So maybe those are the things that need to be also looked at too, that start using that term and nobody can define what it is, unless you can refer to, you know, as, as, you know, said by the IRS or the Housing Authority, or, you know, use some federal guideline that says what family is that you're all comfortable with.
I like the term "societal unit."
That is both vague and, and at least gives a definition.
I think when it says "a societal unit comparative to a traditional family unit," I don't know what that means, but anyway, I don't have a comment other than that.
Any other comments from the public? So you'll just need to press the button until the light turns green, and then please state your name and address.
Yeah, Pam Brown, 23 Sunshine Drive, Kingston. I just wanted to comment, I think it's really sad that we're striking this definition from our ordinances. Oh, and also I wanted to mention, it would be really helpful to attach these documents to the agenda online so that we can print them. I had to come to the town hall to get these earlier this week, so, last week. I just think it's sad, and I think we should just change it to, "Or a number of persons living and cooking together as a single housekeeping unit," that would be, include both definitions. And I think it's odd that we have some prominent federal officials who struggle to define what a woman is, but apparently they have a firm definition of "family." Thank you.
Any other comment from the public?
I just want to stick up for the staff that they are online, because I printed them out today. So they just, but you have to look for them because they are under minutes, and then it said all of the things for tonight. So I understand why somebody couldn't necessarily find them, but I did want to say I was able to. Any other, go ahead. Come on up.
Sorry, just one word. Oh, a couple, a couple words. Susan Prescott, Little River Road. Susan Prescott, Little River Road, Kingston. I just think that because in our ordinances, we refer to "single-family dwelling units," this, you know, "single-family, multifamily," if we have, if we have, if we're referring to "single-family dwelling units," "multifamily dwelling units," possibly in the future, "apartment buildings," that if we don't have some definition of "family," we can't use the word "single-family" either, because we haven't even, you know, if you can't just erase the definition of "family," you've got to come up with something. Because otherwise, you can't refer to "single-family dwelling unit," then somebody will look up, well, what is, yeah, what is a family? Oh, there's nothing. That's, so that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
I think these are valid points, and it, I think that was the one thing that was bothering a lot of us when we talked about this, is using a term and not defining it, especially where we're limiting people to meeting a requirement of that. And I think the, the word, one term that came up that was useful, "societal unit operating as a single housekeeping unit," or something like that, that, I think that, that may be broad enough and yet define what we're talking about in terms of structure, as opposed to trying to legislate.
I mean, if people would feel better having a definition, I just, at the end of the day, if you have a definition that allows anything to be a family, and not having a definition of a family are effectively the same thing.
What if we, we kept our definition and then it made it, made it, gave the governing boards the ability to determine variances in that? We still keep it?
I think you have a lot of, as has been brought up before, a lot of people that are, are operating under this, living situations that don't meet "single-family" by our definitions, and yet are, you know, why would they need to come and get variances at their expense and, you know, and use board time to get variances to do something that we're seeing is allowed? It's almost like, you know, we require people to come to get a conditional use permit for certain types of ADUs, but only because we want to make sure they look like a single-family house. Other ones are done by right. If you're just gonna say that, you know, multi, you know, three, three or four different unrelated people living as a single household unit is a family, by our definition of "family," then why should any, any group of people have to come and get a variance if we're saying it's, it's permissible, you know, and then requiring, you know, anything over two unrelated people to get, get a variance? I think it's discriminatory.
Sorry, before we, I just want to make sure, is there any more public comment from?
Couldn't you just contact your council? And if they know the definition they don't like, there must be some federal something that they're like, "This'll work." Maybe, maybe, I mean, you can't.
I think council didn't really like any singular definition.
They all have a different.
I think they're all missing something.
HHS has one, HUD has one.
But if there's one that the federals, if a federal government uses it, wouldn't it be able to be at least some sort of substantial language that you would fall back on, that, that could be vague enough to still be supported? Or did your attorney just simply say, I understand you can't get this one.
We did not, we did not task the attorney with coming up with a comprehensive definition because we were led down the road of, you know.
Don't put in anything.
It's, there's, to define it essentially just sets you up for enforcement that would be indefensible in court.
Right.
So.
Okay, goodbye.
Go for it. Yeah, mic on the.
The difficulty we have here is that there are definite things in our zoning ordinance that we regulate. We regulate what constitutes the safe health aspects of a home where people live by requiring that there be portable, drinkable water, and that there be an adequate septic system. And in the state of New Hampshire, that is, that is an issue that is predicated upon bedrooms. But regulating the concept of a family is not really what we should, what the zoning ordinance should be doing. And so I understand the, the argument that people have, that we say the word "family" through our, our ordinance. But we do say it, and clearly, from the definition we have, the concept of "family" has morphed considerably from the 40 years ago when this was written. And whether or not regulations are, whether it's the place of regulations to try to somehow pigeonhole what a family is, I just think it's a, it's a, it's a failing proposition. Because this one tries to limit adult, but how many families in Kensington, or my town of Kingston, because of the housing shortage, have a number of adults living together? Lots of kids and their spouses find the need to live in their parents' home for long, long periods of time. And there's no way to really regulate for everything. What the zoning ordinance does do is regulate for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And so we do have requirements that cover them, so that then there, there could always be the issue of, oh my God, 40 people live in that residence. Are they all one family? And the issue isn't whether they're one family, but whether that house can hold a population of 40 people. We regulate for that, very strictly. That, that becomes an enforcement capability for the town. A definition of "family" is never going to be an enforcement capability of the town. We were all comfortable with it in 1970, saying that it was this one, but even in 1970, this could constitute a true definition of all, of millions of families in the United States, I'm sure. So the, the issue is really what our zoning ordinance is capable of doing and what it isn't capable of doing. And I really don't think it's capable of regulating what family is. But we have other standards that we use to ensure the health, safety, and welfare in the realm of housing, for instance.
It doesn't want me to speak because it won't turn green. There it is.
It does.
Virginia Morse, again, Kingston. So our definition does blood, adoption, marriage, cooking together, but not, are a number of persons, but not exceeding two adults, living and cooking together. As a single housekeeping unit, shall be deemed to constitute a family. Let's not say it's a legislative thing. Let's not say we're going to do a variance to see whether you're a family or not. Let's just take out "but not exceeding two adults." And we have a definition, so that when we turn the page and I'm going to see what's a two-family dwelling, a single structure containing two distinct family dwelling, two distinct dwelling units, and other places that it says "family," we have a definition of "family" as a foundation piece.
I think the concern with that is if we say blood, adoption, or marriage, that still leaves out people who don't fall into those categories.
Or a number of persons living and cooking together in a single housekeeping unit shall be constituted, deemed to constitute a family. So the tail end of that doesn't say you need to be married, blood-related, or anything else. It just says people, and if you removed two adults, so that now they can be, if it's healthy and feasible, there can be many, children or adults, take out "not exceeding two adults." At least you have a working definition that helps people when they read through our ordinances and our definitions to have a foundation for that piece.
Any other public comments?
Listening, and I don't normally like to pop out, but this, this has popped into my head. It sounds like the problem is that we're defining family in a very archaic way that does not gel anymore, and that's causing discrimination issues. But it also sounds like the counter to that is we don't want to have like, oh, yes, this is clearly a family, when it's actually, you know, somebody running a. Could we somehow just do it, I don't know legalese, I don't. I'm trying to workshop this while I've been running cameras. Like, just the definite, like, something to do with like sharing expenses, sharing, just focus not on what a family is, like, as a, as a, like, what is a family? Nothing philosophical, just they all share expenses and they're not separated. They're not like a, they don't have separate units to handle, to handle the apartment problem, which I think is kind of the issue. That's what I've been getting, I don't know if I'm missing the point, I might be. But just is, is there something that can be worked on there to just focus on the idea that it's everyone, like, focus on it being a household, so that it's not, like, you have three different rooms, they all lock, they all have kitchens, and like, focus in on that? I don't know. That's just something that popped into my head, and I figured it was worth mentioning, maybe. I'm gonna go back into my booth now, thank you.
And I just, and I think that's the proper thing you should be regulating, is what is considered a family dwelling unit. It's one kitchen. It's, you can't have, you can't have a single-family home with three separate kitchens in it and three other people, but I just, if you haven't, what, what would we actually regulate with the definition of "family"? What zoning application are we going to prohibit from happening with defining how adults co-mingle within that situation? If there needs to be a, you know, if there needs to be clear definitions on, yes, a single-family home consists of one kitchen. Obviously, a single-family can, home can have numerous. Obviously, a single-family can, home can have numerous bathrooms, and bedrooms, and those type of things, so that it's not creating like separate. In there, but I just, even, so the proposed, you know, the, the language that Virginia had provided, I just, so you have that definition there. That definition, what will it permit or prevent throughout the scope of zoning?
I, I think. To the point you made about the kitchen, a single-family dwelling is defined in many places as a, a unit with one kitchen. In many real estate transactions, they have, like me, I, I have a summer kitchen. And I had to get an allowance for that from the lender, because they thought two kitchens makes you a two-family. And again, that's a single-family dwelling. To Virginia's point, I mean, I'm also bothered about getting rid of the word family, just because I like the word family, to be honest with you. And not having a definition for family, and I don't know how many times it comes up in our regulations, but I think it's more than just in planning board, it's definitely in ACC, and I think you'll find it in a lot of the other regulations for the town of Kingston. Without it, we lose a tool. And if we need to make that definition arbitrary to the board, I think it allows us to keep the definition and also allow for exceptions to that. And again, I, I think it, it will require a little digging more to find out how many times we use the family, in what context it's used. Just taking it completely out of our regulations, well, how many regulations is it used in, would be my first question. And I, I am a little bothered, again, by removing that, so the federal government can have their own version. In looking at the federal government's version, I know when I apply for health insurance, it's everybody in the household is a family. And then I look at HUD, they have a different definition, Health and Human Services, they have a different definition. Well, I mean, I honestly don't see a problem of us having a definition, and if it wants to be challenged, let them challenge it. But again, maybe we give the governing boards a little more latitude to determine if there are exceptions to that. Because I, to Alan's point, I think for us on the planning board, we're looking for a little protection of someone showing up and saying, oh, we're fifty people, all living in the house, and it's a family, because I said it is. Or using the Health and Human Services health insurance guidelines, as many people are in that household, they're considered a family. So I, again, I, I am a little bothered about taking that out. I think maybe looking to how it affects everything would be one problematic, and two, it will open loopholes, I think, to certain regulations that we may or may not have in town. I, I, looking at this, I, I just, my personal feeling is maybe if we just add a little, let us decide, if you come in and you have, we want to make a case about it being a single-family, well then, I'm open to listening to the argument, and then I'm open to listening to take a vote. I think it just protects us a little better.
Well, I, I agree with you about the dwelling unit. And, and when this came up as an issue before with a certain property, if the property had been listed as a two-dwelling unit, or, you know, a multi.
Two.
Well, it was called multifamily. It was listed in the thing as multifamily, and they had to go get the variance because of that, per the town council. And if they were listed as, just called the house a two-dwelling unit house, or.
Single-family.
No, it's two, two-dwelling.
Multifamily.
Multifamily, it was, it was two, it was duplex, right? They called it a duplex, which had two dwelling units, they wouldn't have had to deal with the definition of family. That may be the way to get around it, is to say that a multi, a single-family is a single, just means single dwelling unit. And you use the kitchen as the definition there. And a multi, you know, a two, two-family, or duplex is a two-family or two-dwelling unit. And take out, just refer to the, the ways we've used family in the articles as dwelling units. And, and not try to define family, but to define what you, you're calling a house, or a building, or structure, as either multifamily, two-family, or a single-family, as single dwelling unit, two dwelling units, or multi-dwelling units. And, and that, as long as you have a definition of a dwelling unit, which I believe we do, yeah, Glenn's nodding his head, because we've been through this, but, then, then you're covered, and you just, you're just saying we're using family as synonymous with dwelling unit, not as a legal definition of, of a household. And, and that, that gets you around, around the planning issues of it, you know, because that's all we're, we're concerned about. And, and Glenn brought up, actually, a good point, was the number of people, for example, number of adults, that are allowed in this, you know, whatever number of bedroom, or, you know, whatever structure. We, based to septic on the number of bedrooms, but, you know, if, if you had a Walton situation, where you had, you know, fourteen, fifteen people living in a single-family house, that's still family, that's, you know, still a single-family house. But, you know, are we creating a limit based on the septic capacity, or whatever else equals the health and welfare of the population? Are we, do we want to try to create a, a, a limit based on size, or something, to the number of people, in which case, you know, adults and children, and this, you know, infants, or whatever, that can live in a, in a dwelling unit? So, you know, this, this issue came up in the sixties and seventies, when we had people living as families in, in old farmhouses, and as communes, and they're all unrelated, and multiple unrelated adults, and children, and whatever else, living in these communes. And it was determined that it was, that the state couldn't legislate, or towns couldn't legislate against that kind of living arrangement. So, I, I think that's where we want to get around that, and start using the term dwelling unit instead of family.
Can we just pivot back to public comment, final, final, and then, before I come back to the board, those public comments, go ahead.
Madalke Paulette, 189 Main Street. Back to the term family. I think the whole point is to keep our single-family zone, single-family. So even if you have one kitchen, we don't want it to turn into a boarding house. They could rent out every room. I think we want to keep that. And so we, if we don't have guidance to what family is, so that people know, oh, okay, they're looking for a family societal unit, or a family unit for a single family, I think it just gives them guidance to what they're looking for, so we don't get into, like, we've got a, oh, well, we've just rented out every room, and it's, they use that one kitchen. So that was my thought there.
Any other public comments? All right, we will close public comment, and then back to the board for discussion.
Yeah, I would just, one final note for me is just, this wasn't, I don't think the board was seeking out to redefine what a family is. I appreciate what a family, I probably have a much more traditional view of what a family is. But we were tasked with dealing with what has been flagged by town council and other legal entities. We've been tasked with addressing what they considered problematic language for the town. That's why this came up. It, it, is the present, is what we have presented the best? I don't know. At the end of the day, if the townspeople still want that, or if they want to amend it before it goes out, I'm fine either way. I just wanted to understand that this wasn't anyone looking to redefine what a family is, but it's, we were told that this language is problematic for the town.
Has it been a problem at all up to this point, in any instance?
It has been, and I think the bigger problem is, is this. Selective enforcement, so that when the time came where the town wanted to use it, there were so many examples of people that were technically in violation of a definition that existed, and the town never sought action against them. So people were claiming that they were being singled out as some type of protected class that did not fall under this definition, and it is, will become more problematic.
I guess I'm struck by sort of what Glenn reiterated, which is, when we think about the scope of the zoning, zoning ordinance, it isn't to define what a family is. That's not the purpose of regulations and ordinances for this purpose. But we get around that by regulating functionally what the house can sustain. If there is a definition that is so broad, that it could be fifteen, twenty people living in a house, it still falls under the definition of family, and we've done nothing to, to rectify that. I, I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm struck, again, by what is the difference between striking it versus having a definition that is all encompassing?
One of the biggest trends out there right now in the real estate market is someone coming in and buying an eight-bedroom house and renting out just the bedrooms.
One of the biggest trends in the real estate market today is someone coming in and buying an eight-bedroom house, and then renting out the bedrooms at a thousand dollars apiece. I saw one last week. What protects the town from that in our ordinances?
If it's an eight-bedroom house.
Other than that definition of family? It's a single family, but you're not using it as a single family.
And I get it, you don't want to encourage that behavior, but what would be, right now, with houses being so expensive, let's say you had an eight-bedroom house, and eight young people that can't absolutely even afford an apartment decide, let's the eight of us buy this home together, because it has eight bedrooms and all live there?
Because under that process, if you're renting out eight rooms, then you're actually a boarding house.
Okay.
You're not a, you're not a, and you're not even claiming to be a single-family residence. You're claiming to be a boarding house, because you're asking for compensation on a room-by-room basis. And boarding houses aren't allowed in single-family residential.
And I don't think anyone's going to advertise that, hey, I'm buying this place, because I'm going to rent it out. It's, at some point, the town, somebody's going to become aware that, hey, we just found out they're renting out rooms. And then the town absolutely has a duty to take action on that, because that, they're not running that as a single-family residence. They are actively renting it out, and that's when you have, you know, that's why people get deposed under oath, because they could lie under certain circumstances with no repercussions, but the town is probably going to have to pursue it to a point where legal action is necessary.
Any other discussion by the board? Any motions?
Madam Jim, can I ask a question about procedure?
Sure.
Virginia Morse, again, 188 Main Street. You'd think I'd know this, but I don't. If there is, if there are a series of public hearings, as we're having tonight, and a citizen would like to change a warrant article that you're putting in, can wording be changed by, let's say, I make a motion, and then you accept it, and words, wording is changed? Or is that succinct as what you choose? And if I choose, as a citizen, to do it differently, I have to do my own warrant article for that, which I, which is probably too late at this point? But, in other words, can, can wording or perspectives be changed by anyone other than the planning board tonight, or in any one of the public hearings?
Actually, Ellen should field this one, but my impression is that you can make a recommendation, the board can analyze it and maybe incorporate it. But if there's any change to the wording, as it appears tonight, it would have to go to another hearing, so that we could make a motion, based on, for example, input from you, or anybody else, or conglomerated input from the public, and come up with a motion. And if the majority of the board agreed that that's what they wanted the article to say, then it would be amended, and it would be moved to another hearing night to discuss the amended warrant.
Thank you.
Is that, is that correct, Ellen?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's correct.
No, yeah, that's, yeah, it would just, it would have, it would have to be motioned by the board, but you could, anyone from the public could make recommendations that the board consider taking, too.
Okay. That, that is the process by which some change for what we have on the agenda tonight could be done. And, and I understand that that change would then need to come to the public, in a public hearing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion by the board? Anyone prepared to make a motion?
How, how much, we could either move it, we could either move it to warrant, or we could delay it, because we know that there are some other articles that are going to need to come for public hearing. So if the board felt that they wanted some time to, to the next public hearing where an article is going to be discussed, they could do that. Do we, when's our next, do we?
We, we, the possibility that, well, we're going to have a January 2nd meeting.
Yes.
That January 2nd meeting, we would certainly have a completely new zoning proposal for discussion. If that, there would be no opportunity to change it.
At the, at that, at that meeting, that would be the, that would be the ending for zoning articles. I guess my suggestion would be there should be enough split, you know, like, feelings on this, that I, I would not recommend that we move it to the warrant tonight, you know, take a vote to move it to the warrant, and see if there's any way that people want to come up with for it to be reworked for the next, for another public hearing.
Another question?
My question is, do we, do we want to come up with the wording, or what's the deadline for getting the wording for a new warrant article, and so that we can make the January 2nd hearing? Have to be averaged.
This month.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, do we have another meeting this month? Yes, we would have, at the, at the next meeting, we would have to decide on language that would be sent to the public hearing on January 2nd.
We would actually have to have the language in place before our next meeting, so that we could make a paper deadlines. Because I'm sure there'd be backup for the whole.
One warrant article to.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
Because I think you have to put this in. I think this is a terrible definition, but I would like to vote, because, well, based on it, it's like, almost everyone I know.
Man in the booth.
Speaking of family.
So are you thinking we move it, and then in that time, we can come up with another definition to replace it?
Which is then passed by your attorney, to make sure it's going to be as vague as possible, but still help people to figure out what they need to. I like your idea about determining the, the house itself, and get the word family out completely, but that, that might need a little more work than you have time for, because that seems to be what the issue is. No one wants to regulate family, they just want to know when someone comes in and says this is going to be a two-family house, if they know that sixty-five people do not have family make. So they just want to have some sort of guideline, but I wish they could go, yeah, no. But.
Okay.
It's the use of the house, of whether it's single, duplex, or multifamily, but I don't know if you have time for that, but.
Well, I mean, I think, so, I actually, I think that would be probably a better procedure. We, we move the, we, we'll do a motion to remove the language, but now we have time. It seems like there's an appetite to have some type of definition for family, and that would be the preference. So I think in that meantime, we come up with some language that would be acceptable to move forward to replace this.
Right, because we have, in another case, where we've removed the industrial developments definition, we've put in replacement.
And then we have another article to replace.
Separate warrant article, so we could certainly vote to, to remove this.
Okay.
And, and then that wouldn't prevent us from putting an article in to replace it.
Okay. Then to get us. To move Article definitions, to remove number thirteen, the definition of family, to the ballot.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the next article for consideration is number 15 in the preamble, remove the existing language for the definition of industrial developments, which reads, "The dedication of real property to the manufacture of goods and services," and add a new definition for industrial. We're going to take those one at a time. So the motion potentially would be to remove the definition of industrial developments.
I think Glenn gave a good reason. If you read that, it really doesn't tell you anything about what industrial developments are and what industry is. And I think it's a good removal and I think we should, if you can, probably just go straight to public comment and see if there's any questions about it.
Then barring any objections, we'll open public comment for this. Article 15. Go ahead.
I just think that in reading this, it struck me that to promote health, safety, convenience, order, prosperity, and other aspects of the general welfare of the town was a very broad use of...
That's the next article that we'll talk about. We're only talking about number two, which is deleting what is 15, industrial developments.
Isn't, isn't this, isn't the add 15 what you're going to put there? I'm reading it wrong now.
We have to delete what's there first.
Okay.
And that's all that we're doing with this, with this motion is to delete that.
Okay.
And then when we took, when we take up the next proposal, that's a proposal to add a more robust definition of industrial.
All right, and that will happen next or another?
No, that will happen right after this takes place.
Sorry, I'll have to come up again. Any other public comment? All right, any discussion by the board? Oh, let's move to comments. Any discussion by the board? No? Motion?
I'll move that the, to move Article preamble two definitions to remove number 15, the definition of industrial development, to the ballot.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. So the next item for discussion is to replace the definition in number 15 that was just proposed for removal, I'm sorry, just voted on to remove, with language that reads, "The industrial district established by this ordinance is designed to improve employment opportunities and broaden the tax base, as well as to promote health, safety, convenience, order, prosperity, and other aspects of the general welfare of the town. The industrial district allows manufacturing, fabrication, assembly, processing, storage, and distribution use, as well as associated research and administration uses. It is intended that the separation of industrial uses from residential uses will promote a more desirable land use pattern, protect industry from the influence of other land uses, provide suitable space needs for industrial location and expansion, and promote stability of industrial and related development." Is there anything anyone wants to add about that before we move to public comment?
Well, the only problem is if we add it as a definition of industrial, you normally don't use the word that you're defining in the definition. So we're actually defining the industrial district. And this is more about the intent or purp, this is really a category that should be, the paragraph should be under purpose of the industrial district. I think for definition of industrial, you want more, that's a good, good paragraph for the purpose of the industrial district. But what you're doing is you're defining the industrial district as opposed to defining the word industrial. And I think we could just use industrial to, to mean what, what the word means, maybe just Webster's dictionary definition of it. See what I'm saying? You've tried to define industrial as the purpose of, then you say the industrial district is designed to improve whatever.
And I think, and I could be completely, I think the reason there was more to intent and purpose is because without making lists of prohibited and industrial, by including the intent of what is to be considered industrial, allows some subjectivity before the board. So say, okay, you know, it's manufacturer of goods. Well, then somebody comes in and says, oh, well, I manufacture goods and I'm, I'm doing a commercial-grade explosive plant or I'm manufacturing these items. You could go back, well, no, that doesn't fit our definition of industrial because we can say that it is not beneficial or promote the health and general well-being of the town. I think that's why that language was incorporated in there, but I know Glenn had worked on a lot of this, so please correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm having difficulty understanding Peter's contention that this doesn't describe industrial uses because it does in that third...
It does, it does describe, the industrial district allows manufacturing and stuff. So industry, industrial refers to manufacturing, fabrication, assembly, processing, storage, and distribution, so forth like that. You could say industrial as a definition incorporates that and then have the rest of this as purpose and intent. What I'm saying, or, or just change definitions of industrial to industrial district. Because really, the paragraph isn't a definition of the word industrial. It's, it's very good. It does incorporate the definition, but you could say the definition, but industrial and it says the manufacturing, fabrication, assembly, and all that stuff through administrative And then the rest of it, where you say that is established to improve this and that and the other thing, and it is intended that, that should all be under purpose. The very first paragraph of the ordinance is usually purpose. And then, and then industrial, I would just say, is the manufacturing, the fabrication, assembly, that whole sentence through the word uses. I think that's a very good definition. And then by making sure the rest of that phrasing is in the purpose section, it resolves that ambiguity. Because when you're looking at, for example, conditional use permit or something like that, you look up to see what the purpose of the article, of that article is. And usually the conditional use thing says consistent with the purposes of this ordinance. And so you say, oh, well, is, is this widget factory consistent with the purpose of this ordinance?
Just so I'm understanding what you're, so this would be the definition and not fall under a permitted use?
This is, we're in the preamble under definitions. So you're trying to define, define the word industrial as we see it in Kingston.
So that would be manufacturing, fabrication, assembly, processing, storage, and distribution use, as well as associated research and administration uses?
Period, yeah.
And then everything else before and after?
Everything else before and after goes into paragraph one purposes, which I believe is, is my ordinance.
So I think, I think if you, if we want to accomplish what we think we want to accomplish, we only do the beginning part. We don't talk about those purpose issues because we have, we have an industrial zone description that pretty much mirrors that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you...
As long as it's already in there, we don't have to rewrite that, but it's...
Correct. And the industrial, so if we, if we hold the industrial definition to be just one that says industrial allows or refers to the manufacturer, something like that, it only go through...
Uses.
Uses. And have that be the standalone definition in the definition section. I think we would also want to see, I think we would also want to say this also includes those permitted uses listed in 107.
Yes, that would be, that would be good for industrial.
Those permitted uses do go further than what that statement is.
Right.
Because hotels, motels are allowed in industrial zone, they don't really constitute.
And they aren't industrial. Yeah, no, that's, the fact that they're permitted in the industrial zone doesn't mean they're industrial. So that would be a good example of industrial zone permitting other than industrial uses. But you wouldn't put those other uses in the definition of industrial.
Of industrial, industrial, right. I completely understand. I think that that being the case, this should get forwarded as amended and would have to be on the public hearing on the second.
I'd be willing to move that, yeah.
We're taking out substantive information on this, so it becomes something to change.
Oh, yeah, no, it definitely does. But I think it narrows it to the, to a definition of return.
I agree, I absolutely agree.
Any other discussion before I open it up to public comment? Okay. Monica Bell.
I don't know why you need this at all in definitions. You have a zone and your zone says what, I mean, half of this is in it, the other half you're going to add. Because this under purpose, if it's in the zone, you don't define commercial, you don't define residential, since you're taking out the industrial development thing, which was put in a long time ago when there wasn't commercial zones. I don't know why you need a definition of industrial because the zone defines the uses anyway. To have the uses in the zone, have the uses in the definition is redundant.
The zone definitely, this zone definitely allows uses that are not typically industrial.
Right. It just seems redundant to say what industrial is if you don't say what every other use is. And it just seems you might get yourself caught up in, well, it says I can do it here, but it does say I can do it here or in the future, whereas I just, I think a lot of this language is great to be added to the purpose section of the industrial zone, but I thought it seemed kind of odd to have any definitions.
Any additional public comment?
I just had a couple of questions. I think I understand this a little better. It was confusing to me at home. I just wondered about, it seemed to me that other aspects of the general welfare was a vague statement and I wonder how that could be used in a wrong way. And then there is a statement here, protect industry from the influence of uses. Just to comment, it seems to me that that's backwards, so I don't know that that's a necessary statement. It seems that other land uses are influencing industry and not the other way around. That's it.
Any further public comment? All right, we will close public comment. And any discussion by the board?
I do think that the, I think the reason we put this in here was because we were taking out the definition of industrial developments. And I hadn't realized until Ellen had said that, that that dates back to before we had the commercial zone. And I agree with her that the uses permitted in every zone are listed in the zone and don't need to be, I don't think the, it matters that you define industrial if you put the uses as you stated them there, that the part that I was going to leave in for the definition of industrial. If you state that in the, in the definition of the zone, you know, in the, what's, then you're covered. You're basically, you're defining what your industrial zone is without having to define the word industry. So your industrial zone can include hotels and motels, even though those aren't industrial. Other than that, you have to reword the whole permitted uses and say that industrial uses such as, and then in addition to industrial uses, the following uses are permitted. Because if you have a definition of industrial, you have to separate the non-industrial uses out, but if you just say in our industrial zone, we allow.
It does not, we do have, we have a number of odd definitions in the definition section that would seem to fall under the industrial thing, like wholesale establishments. We define definitions, those typically are allowed in industrial districts, but we went out of our way to describe them. I don't think that there is, there's, and there isn't inadequacy with our zoning ordinance if we don't have industrial zone defined because we do have, we do have a definition of what we are permitted in the industrial district. So that's a, that's a decision for the board to make, whether they want to have one or not.
Any further thoughts or discussion from the board? Or is anyone thinking they'd like to make a motion?
This is one of those, if you think you need time to rework it, this is, this is like our last chance and opportunity to rework it.
Yeah, I think that in any case, it should be reworked and maybe punch up the, the purposes and intent and whatever section of the industrial zone ordinance should have all the terms and wording that you've used in here, which I think it lacked before that. And then we don't need, just because we've taken the definition of industrial developments, I don't think we need to define industrial in there since we've defined what is allowed in the industrial zone in the ordinance.
And there's, again, there's, there's nothing wrong with, I just, moving any of these, the purpose of this hearing is I think we kind of get glazed over because we've seen them, so many revisions of it going along, that we have maybe not looked at something with a set of fresh eyes that other folks bring to the table here. So as much as it would be nice to have it over and done with, this is, this is one of our final chances to make the proper revisions if we think we need it. So I don't think we should have any reservations if we feel we need to take something back under revision and put it, you know, it'll make for another long meeting at the next one, but hey, that's part of the gig.
Yeah.
So then do we need a motion if we're not going to do anything with this?
Well, we could move, move, we could move to table.
Okay.
I suppose, and for revision.
I wouldn't use the word table.
No, not table because, because that's bringing the same thing up again, yeah. I would say, reject.
That we are...
Yeah, we'll motion to continue for possible revision.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the third Article preamble two definitions industrial to our next meeting for revisions. to our next meeting for revisions.
Do we have a second? Steve again? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. All right, next up, number eighteen. I wouldn't call this progress, but.
We can call it progress.
So, remove the existing language for the, what's that?
I like this one, sorry.
Oh, all right. Remove the existing language for the definition of mobile homes or house trailer, and replacing it with the definition for mobile home or manufactured home as defined in RSA 67431. So, the existing language that we're proposing to strike is mobile home or house trailer, a prefabricated structure or dwelling unit which is designed for long-term and continuous residential occupancy, and which is designed to be moved on wheels as a whole or in sections which may be temporarily or permanently affixed to real estate. And then the proposed language would be mobile home or manufactured home as defined in RSA 67431. As used in this subdivision, manufactured housing means any structure transportable in one or more sections, which in the traveling mode is eight body feet or more in width and forty body feet or more in length, or when erected on site is three hundred and twenty square feet or more, and which is built on a permanent chassis and designed to be used as a dwelling or with or without a permanent foundation when connected to required utilities, which include plumbing, heating, and electrical heating systems contained therein. Manufactured housing as defined in this section shall not include pre-site-built housing as defined in RSA 67431-A. Is there anything anyone wants to say about that?
I was just going to just say what Ed said, that in our previous meeting was that this gets us in alignment with state definitions and the pre, pre-site-built housing, and, and it means that that doesn't fall under the category of, of mobile homes. So, I think it's well-written and really gets, gets us in line, and, and this and the next one, bring.
Any comment from the public? Seeing none, we will both open and close public comment. Any further discussion by the board? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll read enough here. I move that the article preamble to definitions by removing, removing the existing language to the definition of eighteen, number eighteen, mobile homes or house trailer, and replacing it with a definition for mobile home or manufactured home as defined in New Hampshire RSA 67431 to the ballot.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Next item, article number, oh, I'm sorry, number five, article preamble two definitions, section B definitions, pre-site-built housing. So the proposed language to add a new definition would be pre-site-built housing as defined in RSA 67431-A. As used in this subdivision, pre-site-built housing means any structure designed primarily for residential occupancy, which is wholly or in substantial part made, fabricated, formed, or assembled in off-site manufacturing facilities in conformance with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Minimum Property Standards and Local Building Codes for Installation or Assembly and Installation on the Building Site. For the purposes of this subdivision, pre-site building, pre-site-built housing shall not include manufactured housing as defined in RSA 67431. Is there more we need to say about that?
No, same comment.
Straightforward, yeah. Any public comment for that? We'll both open and close public comment. Any further discussion and/or motions?
The only further thing, just editorial, and it doesn't require to go to hearing, but should we put the NH in front of RSA on these, when we refer to New Hampshire RSA's, should we add NH? Because not everybody knows what RSA stands for. I don't think we have to, statutes annotated, but I don't know if any other state has one, but, you know.
There are those states with statutes.
RSA's, yeah, so I think we should just, and this is purely an editorial change, just put NH in front of any time we refer to RSA's.
Yeah, because when I look at the first, the first time I saw, I see it in the book, it's just RSA.
Yeah, I know, we've done that before, and I, I, I don't think it hurts to add it. I know this when we're reviewing legal discussions, that they always cite in those law, law references, they always use New Hampshire RSA's, such and such. So they know that it only applies here. But, I don't want to hold this up, I, I, that was the only thing I would might add, but.
Well, that's editorial, so it's not, it doesn't really.
It doesn't all change, don't change the vote or anything else, but I just wanted to add. So.
Still waiting a motion.
Yeah, the motion's still there, oh, do, do.
No, no, we're still waiting on a motion.
Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry, that was any discussion. I'll move that we, the article preamble two definitions, add entirely new definition for pre-site-built housing as defined in New Hampshire RSA 67431-TAC-A to the ballot.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another passed unanimously. Moving on to the articles that fall, I'm, sorry, the articles one, in 102 that fall under the historic district. There are several proposed amendments clarifying or modifying. We'll start with 102.2 Historic District 1, referencing the former Sanborn Regional High School. So this would amend the existing language to add the word former and tax map and lot number in reference, so it's tax map R-3417 to paragraph one, to describe Sanborn Regional High School property to read as follows. On Church Street, the district shall go northwest on both sides of the street to a depth of three hundred and fifty feet for approximately one thousand two hundred and seventy-five feet to the further boundary of the former Sanborn Regional High School property, tax map R-34, lot seventeen. All former Sanborn Regional School District property fronting on Main Street, excepting athletic field on Chase and Church Streets, shall be in the historic district. The historic district shall also include the Kingston Plain Cemetery and properties on Depot Road adjacent thereto. Properties whose frontage lies partially within the district shall be considered within the district. To eliminate confusion, the following lots have frontage in Historic District 1 and therefore zoned as completely in Historic District 1. Anything further to say about that? Any public comment? We will both open and close public comment. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, please feel free to bring forward a motion.
Okay, we'll move the article, the 102 Historic District, section 102.2.
Motion by Peter Coffin. Do we have a second? Second by Chris Bascha. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
And I would just, just so the public knows, any of these historic district articles, many of them were brought forward by the historic district, and they were discussed in joint meetings with the planning board and the historic district committing to get a consensus from both, both boards for presenting these.
The next item is article 102 Historic District, section 102.4 Mobile and Manufactured Homes. We are proposing to amend section 102.4 Mobile Homes to read as follows. Mobile homes and manufactured homes as defined by RSA 67431 will not be permitted in the historic districts. Pre-site-built housing as defined in RSA 67431-A may be allowed in the historic districts. Anything further to say about that? Any public comment? Seeing none, we will open and close public comment. Any further discussion by the board? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move article 102 Historic District, section 102.4 Mobile Homes and Manufactured Homes to the ballot as amended.
Do we have a second? Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Moving right along, 102.5 Description and Permitted Uses B Historic District 2. This would be to amend article 102 Historic District, section 102.5 Description and Permitted Uses B Historic District 2. To remove the existing second sentence, which reads, "This area is zoned single-family residential agricultural, and uses will be permitted in accordance with the Kingston zoning ordinances and in conformance with historic district ordinances", and replace it with the following language. Historic District 2 is a residential area containing some fine old homes. The use of land in the district is limited to single-family dwellings, agricultural uses and incidental, incidental uses such as private garages, boathouses, tool sheds, gardens, and the like. Agricultural uses shall mean land used for agriculture, farming, darying, pastage, appiculture, horticulture, floriculture, silviculture, and animal and poultry husbandry. These uses will be permitted in conformance with historic district ordinances and regulations. Anything further on that? Any comment from the public? We will both open and close public comment. Any further discussion by the board or motions?
I just have a quick question on this. Was this, Historic District 2 is, is not the area that encompasses the old, same word? So that's a different, that's Historic District 1?
That's right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we.
This is, this is other historic district.
Right, thank you.
Any motion?
Yeah, move article 102 Historic District, section 102.5 Description and Permitted Uses B Historic District 2 to the ballot as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Next item, article 102 Historic District, section 102.7.1 Sheds and Outbuildings. The proposal is to add entirely new, an entirely new section to article 102 Historic Districts, section 102.7.1 Sheds and Outbuildings to read as follows. Certain types of sheds and outbuildings no longer require a town building permit, see 301.1.F. But within the districts, those structures still require a certificate of approval from the HDC. Among other details, style, size, and lot placement will be reviewed. Anything more to say about that? Any public comments? We will open public comment.
I don't understand why certain things are being called out. We, we know things have been passed, but certain things change sometimes. So I don't, I just don't understand why it doesn't just say, within the district, all structures require a certificate of approval from the HDC, because that seems to be what this is saying. So I just don't know why, because then, if, if next year something changes about a setback or not needing a town building permit, do you then have to revise this to add in that new thing that was changed? So I just think that, we already know that they don't need a building permit, that, that's under building permits. But the issue with the HDC is whether or not you need a certificate of approval. And it seems, the way this is written, that within the district, all structures require a certificate of approval anyway, regardless of what the setback may be. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Any other comment from the public? Let's close public comment? Yeah? Um, Mike.
Mike.
Are you, do you understand what Ellen's saying, and?
Well, I, I, and I, if I could just comment, I, I think the concern was, is knowing that a citizen's petition or an article passed, people would read that and feel that it supersedes the language in there if it didn't specifically reference. Yes, we understand there's an exemption now, but you still need a certificate of approval for HDC. And I, and I think that's why it was requested like that, so people wouldn't say, well, no, I don't need to go through that, because I don't need a permit for this anymore.
Regardless of whether you need a permit or not, all structures need a certificate of approval. Because I'm just saying that in the future, what if something else now, the setback, oh, it doesn't need a permit, then you're going to add that in. And then, whereas this way is just, regardless of whether a structure needs a permit, all structures in the district need a certificate of approval. Now we don't have to keep going back and forth if things change.
That might be, that might, that might be cleaner, yeah.
It's true right now.
Yes.
So, I just want that, I don't know how to answer it, but it's true right now, I think. So, just, I'm sorry.
Please come, please come to the. Madeline Willett, 189 Main Street. I do believe that it's already required right now, I just, how do you handle it? They would already need to come before the Historic District Commission for that approval. How do you make that clear? So, I'm up for suggestions.
And that was the goal of the amendments that you have produced, is increasing clarity for somebody needing to understand what the HDC ordinance is by laws.
Right, we're just trying to, this whole thing was just to make it more clear to applicants.
Right, because in the past, people went to the building inspector to get the building permit, and were told, ah, you're in HD1, you're going to need to go to the Historic District Commission to also get approval from them. In this case, they say, oh, I don't need a permit. They haven't visited, they don't know, other than contacting every single person in the historic district, districts, and reminding them that, it certainly, it could be reworded as taking out, you know, because the title is Sheds and Outbuildings, it says, without making the reference to not requiring a town permit, that all structures, regardless of whether they need a building permit or not.
Which is out there already today.
I, I understand that's what exists, but, but as, as Chris pointed out, people think that they may have that exemption if it doesn't require a permit, that doesn't require, it doesn't require HDC approval. So, just having something that, that singles that out as a separate line, without referencing that particular article, saying all, all structures, regardless of whether they need a permit, town permit, still require or require a certificate of approval from HDC.
Is that something that the town needs to vote on? Because that's true today.
Right, I, I.
So that's what, that's what I can use.
It's interesting.
If you're removing the desire to clarify the impact of a former vote, you put this in so that people understand that if they look at this, that they still have to vote the HDC. Other people... But if you just read the present HDC standards, it says, "All construction requires HDC approval."
Right. Maybe it's just a letter sent to all residents of the Historic District that because this change may be just an informative thing. Because this... It's already... It is already in place. It's just a...
It's already required.
It's already required. It doesn't need to go before a vote because it's already... It already is true today. Maybe it's just an informational thing. What do you think?
We're sending our letter to the board. You can't do anything.
Right. Right? I mean, wouldn't that cover it? Maybe we can strike the whole thing.
I think it just gets removed.
I think it just gets removed because it's already true today.
I mean, I understand why... I understand the outreach that you're accomplishing.
Yeah, yeah. I think that would... I think that would work.
Any further public comment? We'll close public comment. Any discussion or motions by the board?
I'm guessing we take consensus that we want to remove this...
Yeah, let's make a motion to not move it to...
Okay.
That's the most reasonable motion to not move that public...
Do you want to make that motion? That's...
I'll make a motion that we do not move... Whatever I want. Move Article 102 Historic District, entirely new Section 102.7.1 Sheds and Outbuildings to the ballot.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
So motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin. All in favor?
Aye.
Does that make it a little confusing? I mean, shouldn't we vote to tell the negative?
No, since this public hearing was to ostensibly move things to public... I mean, to the town ballot, a motion that says you're not going to...
Yeah. It just... It won't appear on the town ballot, so it'll be nothing to be confused about. Because this is... This is different than like a motion that can be either be in support or disapproval of a proposed one. This is just... This is just, we're not going to put it on the ballot.
This effectively says it's not going to show up.
All right. So now we're moving on to 102.8 Procedure C. Yes, I remember. Rob voted and then asked the question. The proposal is to amend Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.8 Procedure and Section 102.8C to make the following editorial changes and replace the word "receipt" with "filing" in the first paragraph, and add new language to letter C to include the building inspector. New language would read, "Upon obtaining an application, the applicant should supply the information relative to such application as may be required by the Historic District Commission from time to time. Before applying, applicant should refer to HDC regulations and design standards in Section 1201." In... Should that be 102? It's... That's correct.
Section 102, is it?
Sorry. "In accordance with New Hampshire RSA 676:9, no building permit shall be issued for any work proposed to be done in the Historic District until the commission has approved the application. The commission shall make a decision within 45 days of filing of application, and failure to do so will be deemed to constitute an approval by the commission. Within said period, the commission shall: A) determine that the application is of no interest to the purpose of the Historic Districts or that the proposal is harmonious with the purpose of the Districts and so notify the applicant; or B) determine that the application represents a proposal that is in conflict with the purpose of the Historic Districts and schedule a meeting with the applicant; C) the commission shall promptly notify the applicant, the building inspector, and the selectmen of its decision. Further details in HDC Procedure can be found in Section 1202." Anything further on that? Do you want any answers?
I think... I think it's always wise. It's two letters.
Any comment from the public? Ellen, we'll open public comment.
I leave this up to the HCC. I was just looking at it, and I thought it might be prudent to put in decision within 45 days of filing of completed application. Because I know at planeboard level, sometimes you got an application, it's not complete, you have to tell them to complete it, but this is not giving... It's 45 days from just getting the application itself, so...
That's why we actually changed it to filing, because within the definition of filing, it referenced completeness.
Does it?
As opposed to just the receipt, because we wanted to protect them from just that.
If you have filing as a definition, which I didn't see anywhere, then that's fine because I can take care of it, but that was my concern.
And Robbins, too. I was going to say, and Robbins, too. I think you've had enough of those. Applications have come in that weren't complete.
Seeing no more comment from the public, we will close public comment. And any further discussion and/or motion by the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the editorial changes for Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.8 Procedure and Section 102.8.C to be incorporated in the ordinance after the March 2024 town vote has taken place, and move the following proposed amendments for Article 102.8 to the ballot as amended.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Can I just ask a question? So the stuff in green you guys are doing without going... It's just going to appear. It's just the red stuff? I thought I presented the...
Just the red stuff.
So it'll all take place after the March vote?
Yes, some of the... I read the... I read the... I'm going to give you a...
Yeah, we're just going to... Go back to the March vote. At the recommendation that we do that again one time.
Just want to make sure I'm following this correctly. So this is the same as 102.9? Do we need to review this or not?
Well, you might have to review this. The only reason this editorial is going to be in the board and going to be on this is to acknowledge that this is... That each change is going to take this after the March vote.
Okay.
Because that was not decided on last week. And if the board isn't agree with that, I would like to move the editorial to use after the March vote.
What else?
And that's why I was...
Okay.
But that's just...
But anything green isn't going to be... Line for instance, but I was asking the auditor, anything that is not going to be appearing on the warrant?
Correct.
Oh, yeah. Up to the mic, Ellen.
Anything?
Tell you later.
You're incorrect. Anything that is green and if you have discussed tonight, it's not on the warrant. That is just editorial and...
For confirmation.
So that will be moved when we were...
Yes, it's just for tonight's discussion.
So the only reason was just because we didn't vote to move this... The editorial changes to after the election.
Yes, because something special is... We'll do it right away.
Yeah, yeah.
And in thinking about it, I just think let's just keep it consistent and do it all the way.
Right, good.
Unless it's urgent, you have to change it. It's not urgent.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the editorial changes to Article 102, HDC's 102.8 Public Hearings to change it to the... To be a new Section 102.8.1 to differentiate it from 102.8 Procedure. Made after the March 2024 town vote.
Do we have a second? Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Moving right along, we're at Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.9 Guidelines. Proposal is to amend Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.9 Guidelines as follows. Move the existing language. When making a determination or the application, reasons for denial of an application must be clearly documented and shall be factual and verifiable reasons for denial to Section 102.10. Zero. Sorry. Remove, "Reasons for denial should not be subjective or based on opinion or speculation." Move, "If the Historic District Commission or parties at the HDC application level other than the applicant requires expert testimony or documentation to support the denial, they cannot require the applicant be responsible for the generation or costs associated with such supportive denial. This shall not prohibit..." This shall not prohibit the Historic District Commission from making additional recommendations to an applicant that are in the spirit of the Historic District asking for voluntary compliance or participation." In parentheses added, "March 14, 2023", to the bottom of the same 102.9 section below A, B, C, D. D, add an entirely new item. D, "Whether the proposal is of a design or of materials or for a purpose or use inconsistent with the overall character of the district as described in 102.5." The updated proposed amendment would read, "In consideration appropriateness of an application, the commission shall consider, among other things: A) the effect that the exterior facade of the building will have when viewed in relation to the surrounding buildings in the district; B) the change, if any, in the amount of noise, congestion, and traffic that the proposed building or use will create in the district; C) whether the proposal is of a design or of materials or for a purpose or use inconsistent with and detrimental or injurious to buildings and purposes or uses upon adjoining lands, and whether such proposal is such that it will detract from the character and quiet dignity of the Kingston Historic District; D) whether the proposal is of a design or of materials or for a purpose or use inconsistent with the overall character of the district as described in 102.5. If the Historic District Commission or parties at the HDC application level other than the applicant requires expert testimony or documentation to support the denial, they cannot require the applicant be responsible for the generation or costs associated with such support of denial. This shall not prohibit the Historic District Commission from making additional recommendations to an applicant that are in the spirit of the Historic District asking for voluntary compliance or participation." Added, "March 14, 2023." Anything further on that? Any comment from the public? Just don't make me read that again, Ellen.
Blue and purple means that they're just being moved, but their existing language has already been adopted. So the board can do that already, the commission. They don't need any... So the only thing that's going to... This is moderator question. So the only things appearing on the warrant, the ballot, are going to be the things in red.
Yeah.
And everything else will already be adopted. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Close public comment? Discussion or motions from the board?
I'll move the Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.9 Guidelines to the ballot as amended.
Motion by Peter Coffin. Do we have a second? Second by Steve Padfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that was two things, but we just did it as one, right? Denial and appeal? Yep, all right. Denial and appeal. Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.10, denial and appeal. Proposal is to amend Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.10, denial and appeal, to add the building inspector to paragraph 1 and move language currently found in Section 102.9 to be a new paragraph at the end of the section. The proposed amendment would now read, Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.10, denial and appeal. "In such cases as the commission may deny an application, it shall supply the applicant, the building inspector, and the board of adjustment with a letter citing the reasons for such denial. Any person aggrieved by a decision of the commission may appeal to the board of adjustment. When making a determination on the application, reasons for denial of an application must be clearly documented and shall be factual and verifiable reasons for denial." Added, "March 14, 2023." Anything further on that? Any comment from the public? We'll open and close public comment. Any further discussion or motions by the board?
I'll make a motion to move Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.10, denial and appeal to the ballot as amended.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, second that.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Moving on to Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.12, pre-existing use. Proposed amendment to Article 102 Historic District by adding an entirely new section, which would be 102.12, pre-existing use, to read, "Nonconforming uses legally in existence prior to the enactment of this ordinance may be continued, maintained, repaired, and improved unless and until such use becomes an imminent hazard to public health and safety. Nonconforming uses may not be expanded or changed to other nonconforming uses." Anything further to say about that? Any public comments? Seeing none, we will both open and close public comment. Any further discussion or motions from the board?
I'll move Article 102 Historic District, entirely new Section 102.12, pre-existing use, to the ballot.
Do we have a second? Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. All in favor? Passed unanimously. Next up, Article 102 Historic District, Section 102.13, conflicts. The proposed amending of Article 102 Historic District by adding an entirely new Section 102.13, conflicts, to read, "Must comply with all other Town of Kingston ordinances and regulations unless explicitly stated otherwise." Seems straightforward, but just in case. Anything more to say about that? And then we'll open up for public comment.
Virginia Morris, this needs a subject to be consistent with our wording and what must comply with all other Town of Kingston ordinances. Applications, I assume, is what is intended there, but there's a word missing. It's not a complete sentence. So we say, "Nonconforming uses legally..." Okay, so is... What must comply with all other? I think the word "application" is needed there. It's just an editorial piece. Is that not what's intended?
Was it use itself?
It's probably pulled from a list.
Oh, that may be.
And so the language worked in the list and maybe doesn't work as well without being in that list.
Yes.
Because I just looked at Maddie, and Maddie said she did pull it from someplace else in the ordinance, which leads me to believe that that's exactly the case. But I'd have to find where that is.
I think it's all our conflicts that was to say that.
Yeah.
Maybe just a few of them.
See, so, in the commercial zone C1, we say, "For conflicts must comply with all other Town of Kingston ordinances and regulations unless explicitly stated." So, what it's saying is, the ordinance above must comply. And it's just done in a very sort of bulleted way. Because the implication when you read it, at the end of commercial zone C1, for anybody who wants to look at 108-10, we have our, just a series of statements, sections, one of which is conflicts. And it simply says, "Must comply with all other Town of Kingston ordinances and regulations." So, we're making a very broad statement here. We're saying that if there is somehow a conflict with this ordinance or regulations. So, you are just making the Historic District Commission comply with what the other districts say throughout the ordinance book. And that's exactly how it reads throughout the ordinance book.
Which I did not read thoroughly. So, what this means is, this ordinance must comply with, not, the application must comply with.
Correct. It is, it is referring to the actual overall ordinance. At least that's how it is, that's how it shows up in the other ordinances in the book.
I would like to suggest that that would be a very good addition to that phrase, even though it might be done differently throughout the rest of the.
Because that'd be commercial zone three, same exact thing, same, same exact language. You'd be very consistent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and return to the board for conversation or probably discussion would be better for there or a motion.
On a, on a, just a simple English-language editorial thing like that, I don't think we need to move it to a new hearing if we're going to add the ordinance as a subject to the sentence.
Yeah.
It doesn't change the meaning of the sentence.
Not at all.
In fact, it clarifies the meaning of the sentence.
So, I mean, we could make it in every instance in the book. In every instance, it would be.
As an editorial change following, blah, blah, blah.
Correct.
Without having that vote, but I would suggest that, or we could do it, pass it the way it is, and then the editorial change.
I think it would be cleaner to just
Put it in.
Put it forward as is and then take it up as an editorial change for everything collectively.
So, I'll move the Article 102 Historic District entirely new Section 102.13, conflicts, to the ballot as amended by adding the term, this, the ordinance in front of the additional remark. Sorry, in, in front of the amended article.
You have a second? Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. All in favor? Passed unanimously. We then have a number of editorial changes being proposed. I don't need to read all these, right? So, we don't need this motion either.
The only thing we need to do is to
You can just make a motion that all editorial changes be made after the March town meeting. That's still moved.
Do we have a second? Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Chris Bashaw. All in favor? Passed unanimously. We're now entering commercial zone C2. Section 109.7, special exceptions. Proposing an amendment to, amending, rather, Article 109 Commercial Zone C3, Section 109.7, special exceptions, and replacing special exceptions handled by the zoning board of adjustments with a conditional use permit handled by the planning board, changing the language "property values" to "properties" in subsection A1, amending the language to read as follows. Conditional use permit. If after a public hearing by the planning board, a proposed business not specifically permitted or prohibited in this zone is found to conform in character of operation and would be in harmony with the permitted uses as described in this zone, then such use may be allowed by conditional use permit issued by the planning board, subject to appropriate conditions and safeguards as may be deemed necessary by said planning board. The board shall deny requests for conditional use permits that do not meet the standards of this section. A conditional use permit shall meet the following standards. One, no unreasonable impact to properties in the vicinity or change in the essential characteristics of any area, including residential neighborhoods or businesses and industrial districts on account of the location or scale of buildings and other structures, parking areas, accessways, odor, smoke, gas, dust, or other pollutant noise, glare, heat, vibration, or unsightly outdoor storage of equipment, vehicles, or other materials. Two, no creation of traffic safety hazards or substantial increase in the level of traffic congestion in the vicinity. Three, no unreasonable excess excess demand from municipal services, including but not limited to water, sewer, waste disposal, police, fire protection, and schools. Four, no unreasonable hazard to the public or adjacent property on account of potential fire, explosion, or release of toxic materials. Five, notification of the hearing will be provided to the conservation commission and board of selectmen. I just want to double check, so it's, reference to C2 appearance, C3 right here. Okay. Perfect. Anything further from the board? Public comment? Ellen, please come forward.
Hello.
Is your mic on?
I didn't hear what you said.
Is your mic on?
It is, it's green, so. I was looking at this, and while I agree with part of it, I think part of it is inappropriate in that I think that if the town has voted in the ordinance to prohibit something, then that needs to go to the ZBA, one way or the other. I do think that if something's not specifically prohibited, but also not specifically permitted, then that is a drain on the applicant to have to go to the ZBA on something that just isn't part of the list. So, I agree with that. I think that makes sense, and I think that's reasonable. But I think that the town has voted to prohibit something, that that's still either, that that should still remain as a special exception or variance, whatever the board thinks, but I don't think it's, I mean, I think the ZBA is there for.
I, I think that's within the zone, and that's always, always been, the special exceptions have only been
Right. But the special exception is being removed.
Right.
So, this is now being put under the conditional use by the planning board.
And it, and it still says not specifically permitted or prohibited, so if it's, something is
I'm just, I, I read not specifically permitted, but then I read or prohibited, so.
Right, so this says
Oh, oh.
I read it, I didn't read that not specifically
Depends on how you read it. It, it's either not specifically permitted, or it's permitted, or, or it's prohibited.
Right.
Yeah, or you could, if you add the word "it's" in front of there, it would You could just say neither specifically permitted or prohibited.
There you go. Because the way I'm reading it, it's that it's not specifically permitted or it's prohibited, then we get to give it a conditional use permit. I don't think that's
That's not right, yeah.
If that's not your intent.
That's not the intent, and ironically
The discussion.
Proposed business not specifically permitted or prohibited. The zoning ordinance specifically permits things and specifically prohibits things. And this says, if a proposed business not specifically permitted or prohibited, so it's, the ordinance gives you those uses. This isn't allowing the planning board to act on something that's prohibited.
So, I just think that that sentence needs to be a little, like Peter says, neither specifically permitted
Yeah, I think we should change "not" to "neither," just to clarify that, because if, if you
I agree with that, but that's not how I read it. So, if I'm not reading it that way, it's a good So, if your intent is just to be neither specifically permitted nor specifically prohibited, I have no problem with that. I think that works, and I think that's clear. But the way I read it was, it's not specifically permitted or prohibited, not that it's, or it's prohibited. That it's not specifically permitted or it's prohibited. Two different, two different
Yeah, or you could swap permitted and prohibited, so it's not specifically or permitted, and then that would resolve any ambiguity.
Yeah, that's true, just slipping it.
I, I can see what you're saying, but you kind of have to
I understand that's not your intent now, but that's not how I read it.
And it, it can be misread. And the idea is to resolve ambiguity. Ironically, this has been the wording that it's been for the SE for a long time, and it's never that I know of has ever been misread. As, because otherwise it said, you know, if you, if you read it that way, that a business not specifically permitted or it was prohibited in the zone could go for a special exception, then
Because if something was prohibited in the zone, it could go for a special exception. If something's prohibited in this zone, the way I'm reading it, you can get a conditional use permit by the planning board, and I think that's appropriate. I think the other way, that if it's not specifically permitted
Which is how it was intended.
And not specifically prohibited, then the planning board should be able to do it. But that's not, not specifically doesn't necessarily go with both.
Right.
Unless it's stated that way, so. I mean, all you'd be doing is not specifically permitted or not specifically prohibited.
Yeah, you could just take out the word "specifically" too. You could say neither, neither permitted nor or prohibited.
That's true.
Would this, do you know that there'd be now a conditional use permit and a special exception?
No, 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 no. This would just clarify that what I was saying I thought you needed, you don't need, you just need to add a word to clarify that it's not specifically permitted and it's also not specifically prohibited.
Say neither specifically permitted nor
Yeah, neither.
Neither nor. It's an editorial change.
Neither and not is
Yes, this is
Clarifications.
Since, I don't think there's any way somebody can make the argument Ellen's making. Adding in the, the language that she's asking for is not a, it's not a substantive change. Because it doesn't change what this is saying.
It's not, doesn't change your intent, right. I listened to the meeting, but I didn't get what the intent was. So, it's like, oh, this is not a good idea.
And the wording on the conditional use permits is the same as the wording on the SEs, with exception of the change to properties, changing property values to properties, which gives you the ability to, you know, any effect on the properties as opposed to just on the value of the properties.
No, I have a question on your change on A1, but I'll get to that in a second.
So, so that
So, the changing wording is going to be, a proposed business is not specifically permitted or specifically prohibited? That's the change that the
Or not specifically.
Or not specifically. The same clarifying words in front of both of them.
Any further comments from the public?
On A1, that's all I'm saying. I don't have a comment with the change. I saw what you did, I saw why you did it. I would just like a discussion at this hearing that taking away the word "property values" and changing it to "properties" in no way means that values are no longer part of it. People in the past have gone back and said, well, they removed values, so obviously they don't mean that anymore. So, I just want the minutes for this hearing to actually reflect that the board's intent is not to take away that part of an unreasonable impact may be a property value. That's all. We all seem to have
And, and that appears in a lot of different towns and throughout the state, the effect on property values. And, and definitely, it certainly was not my intent when that change was made. We discussed it and
But I think, I got that during your discussion, but I don't know if it meant to reflect it. This is the hearing that people often will refer to. I just thought, since the board actually said that at the meeting, then it would be good that at this hearing, the board confirmed that the removal of the word "value" in no, was not intentional of meaning that property value
Could not be considered, yes.
Was a consideration.
There, there definitely, property values are part of the impact on properties.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Any further discussion or motions by the board?
I'll move the Article 109 Commercial Zone C2, Section 109.7, amending special exceptions to be a conditional use permit to the ballot as with the addition of the term "not specifically prohibited" following "not specifically permitted." So, that's the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but with just the further discussion to clarify that the striking of property values does not exclude property values from the term of impact to properties.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Chris Bashaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Article 110 Commercial Zone C3, Section 110.3, permitted uses K. Amending Article 110 Commercial District 3, Section 110.3. K by adding new language as follows. K. Vehicular, vehicular, trailer, and recreational vehicle sales, rentals, or leasing and service repair facility provided that no lot used for this purpose may be located any closer than 1,000 feet in any direction to any other lot used for this purpose. This 1,000-foot separation applies to like businesses. So, automotive vehicle sales and leasing and repair must be separated by 1,000 feet from a new automotive vehicle sales, leasing, and repair business. Heavy truck sales would not be subject to the 1,000-foot separation requirement from automobile sales facilities. Likewise, an automobile short-term rental company would not be subject to the 1,000-foot separation from an automobile sales facility. The planning board is allowed to determine if proposed uses constitute uses that require the 1,000-foot separation. Any further discussion there? Further comment there? Any public comment? Question, Ellen?
This is asking the one I'm here for, the other one's just fine. On this particular one, I, I have watched the meeting, and I'm going to ask that the board put this off for a year. And I'm now going to try to explain why I think that that would be a legitimate thing to do. During the discussion, first it came up that this was to clarify the previous language. The previous language has been clarified, it's been clarified for decades. Town council reclarified that it's very clear what it means. This isn't clarification, it's a change. And while I understand some of the reasons for the change, I think it's widespread at this point. And I don't think the board's had enough, hasn't looked into it enough to find out what the impact may or may not be and why. There's a lot in this that is unclear. For example, what is the board using as guidelines to determine if the proposed use constitute uses that require the 1,000-foot separation? That's too vague. That's too vague. You haven't spelled out to anybody why, how are you even going to figure that out? Peter came up with an idea that one of the reasons why the 1,000 feet was initially enacted was due to the impact of having so many in a row and the density for that. And that he suggested that perhaps the use could be spread out to the other two zones. And therefore, it would allow that those uses to be spread out more throughout town. No one's looked into that, to find out whether that's viable or not viable. The reason why the town initially set up to have used cars allowed in this particular zone is because they were there already. And that way, they wouldn't be non-conforming uses. So rather than spread them around towns like, yeah, let's keep them down there, but we're going to put in the 1,000-foot restriction so that we don't just have car, 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 car driving up Route 125. I agree with Chris's statement that there should be other types of restrictions on how these things are built. And he suggested that that could be taken care of next year. I agree with that. Get the things you want done in place. Work through it for this year. I don't think waiting a year, I don't think there are a lot of people clamoring into the planning board to say, by all means, let's change this particular section. Then it couldn't wait a year for the board to do the legitimate work that it has to do to make sure that the change for this isn't going to negatively impact the town and how it looks and what people want. Because you did say that some work still needs to be done for car lots and development and things of that nature. I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree that maybe there are other things that could be capable. It could be done, and Glenn would have to be the one to say this, that the restriction could be more to do with requirements such as, you know, a building size or something of that nature, rather than just have car facilities, vehicle sales, whatever, pop up along Route 125 that really have no legitimate tax impact to people. It doesn't bring in business or provide jobs for people, which is the point of the commercial zone to begin with. I have other questions, because it's like, well, heavy trucking doesn't have to, what's heavy trucking? There's no definition of what heavy trucking is. It was discussed that, you know, it's different from heavy equipment. Okay, but what is the intent of changing this? For example, I know someone who had their CRV fixed, and it's listed as a truck. So can you have a CRV on one lot, but cars on another? And who's going to enforce that? It starts to get a little crazy, because there's not enough language that has come along with this discussion to make it enforceable, to make the planning board know what the requirements are and the restrictions, to let the public know what the planning board's going to use. I just think that some more work needs to be done to make this a better change. Because right now, I think it's still a little ambiguous, and I think that it's going to wind up being unenforceable. Because here's the other thing, you have somebody, okay, so they have truck sales, okay. Well, five years from now, they don't want to do trucks anymore. They, or they add a CRV. Who's going to tell them they can sell a truck if they can't sell a CRV? But they're already there, and they're within the 1,000 feet. So that's going to be a nightmare for the board of selectmen. We're going to have to look and determine what's a heavy truck, what's not, all of that kind of stuff. So I just think I'd like the board to delay it a year and be more specific about it, so everybody knows what they're talking about. This is going to make you all crazy when, if someone comes in under this wording. You won't know what's allowed and what isn't. And either will the public and either will the applicant. So that's all I'd just like, and since Warren Arkles has been here by Wednesday, I have a straw vote on whether the board thinks this is something they could delay a year. I'll help work on it to get better language to go forward with this. Because I understand that, you know, some things could be legitimate, not the way this is written. But on the other hand, the way it's changed may not allow the kind of things you think you're going to be able to work out in that zone. Thank you.
And then, you've isolated heavy truck sales. There's no reference to pickup trucks, which is usually part of vehicle sales lots, you know, used lots, car lots. I know Plastow has some that are just, you know, there's a few of them that are just pickup trucks, for example. And how would you classify that? Because you use the term automotive, automotive, you know, automotive. And it's defined by the state DMV, it's like-
When I get a chance to talk, I'll discuss it with the planning board. I mean, you there, Peter, the response to Ellen's concern, from my perspective, is right up front. It says the 1,000-foot separation applies to like businesses. So if your business is similar in construct and impact, it has to be separated by 1,000 feet if you follow these uses. And if they're not like businesses, so if you're talking about you have a used car dealership and 1,000 feet away, they want to do a facility for refrigerated truck parts, those aren't like businesses. And the planning board is absolutely capable of making the determination that those businesses are not like businesses. They don't cater to the same buyer, they don't sell the same equipment. That was the entire premise and the entire discussion revolving around what the issue was with the existing language.
And I don't think it was necessarily just the clarification. It's because I think the appetite has changed for, you know, people are always asking why our business is not coming to town. But yeah, so the way this is currently written, if somebody wants to sell agricultural tractors within 1,000 feet of a used car dealership, they cannot, the way this is currently written. This would allow for there to be, say, okay, yes, these are not similar businesses. But as far as heavy truck, heavy truck is defined through state RSA. I believe it's anything with a G BW over 18,000 pounds or anything with three axes, more than two axes. That is clearly defined under, you know, the DMV of what constitutes a heavy truck. So I think when people think of motor vehicle sales, I think there's no difference between an F-250 and-
Motor vehicle is different than automobile.
Yeah, automobile or-
Ah, it isn't. Automobile is, an F-250 is not an automobile.
Yeah.
By any definition. And so when you turn, use the term, that's what I, I-
You said F-250.
Is not an automobile.
It's a motor vehicle.
It's a motor vehicle. I would say, yeah. But you didn't use the term motor vehicle, you used automotive.
Yeah, so, well, automotive vehicle, it's not a automotive vehicle sales.
So you're saying the definition of an automotive vehicle-
Doesn't say car sales or truck sales, it's-
Automotive.
Yeah, divert back to a motor vehicle. So I think, yes, you can't say, well, my lot sells Honda Civics and my lot sells F-150s or F-250s, so they're dissimilar, so they can be next to each other. No, that's, I don't think anyone would, I don't think anyone would be okay with that type of delineation. But yes, there's, the person who sells, early in Suns, they have like some 10-wheel dump trucks and stuff out there. You know, if that was all they were selling, that, I think that would be very different than a used car lot that is catering to-
Right, but they also sell trucks.
You know, they kind of have a broad spectrum, but if they focused on one thing solely, I think it would, I think it would be easier to define. But I think there's been, you know, people are always asking, how come Kingston's not business friendly? Why are businesses not coming here? And I think this made the section too restrictive, because, and I think it wasn't just a clarification, but yes, it was a change that, yeah, we need, this needs to allow a little more flexibility.
And then, as Ellen mentioned, we brought this up and we discussed it. If we're trying to be more business friendly, why aren't we opening those up in the other zones, other commercial zones? Why are we prohibiting vehicle sales in the other commercial zones?
I can't answer that. We have different uses allowing different sales.
Right, and as we discussed before, most of what happens, and the reason why we get so many of these requests for something that's neither specifically permitted or prohibited, is because when these zones were made, they looked around and saw what businesses were already there, and they listed those as permitted uses. And if there weren't any vehicle sales businesses in C1, then they just didn't list it. So that's, that's why they had this article in them to allow CUPs for things that are neither prohibited nor permitted, is to cover all those businesses, either new types of businesses or businesses that didn't exist in the regular zone, so that it wasn't a case where, you know, the planning board at the time said, we definitely don't want auto sales in C1, C2. They just didn't have any there, so they didn't list them.
Yeah, but I think when this was crafted, I, my understanding from what I read back on it is they didn't want to be the auto mile of Kingston, where they had car dealerships through every zone. So they said, well, they exist down here, so this is where we'd like them to continue, but allow separation in between them, so it doesn't just become straight used car lots for that whole southern part of Route 125.
Right, so in order to increase the availability without increasing the density, why not open it up into the other commercial zones? Just finding out there.
I mean, we've never talked about that as a board, but-
No.
That's my point. That there's ways to develop these kind of things, and the possibility is that maybe these go in C1 and C2. But the board hasn't talked about that. The board hasn't talked about the other possibilities. When this was opened up, it was one of those things that anytime something was sold, it became a car lot. We had a motel become a car lot. We had a house become a car lot. We had an electric company become a car lot. So this starts to become an issue. Part of it was also not that whether it was a car lot or not, it was also the visual. So I don't see how having a car, whether you have a used car lot or whether you have a short-term rental company changes the face of anything. It's still going to be a lot that just has a bunch of cars on it. Now, it could have a big building. It's very unlikely that a rental company will have a large building. If what the board is looking for is a better tax impact, more employees, that kind of thing, it can't just be we open up the use, which has been closed for a long time, because that's what the town, the town didn't want to have, the frontage on 125 of nothing but vehicles. Whether they were used, new, trucks, whatever. So you keep talking about a particular application, which I don't think the board should focus on, but maybe that application would be determined to be a good and to go in the zone. But it would have to be written correctly, so that it would be based on the size of the building, the use of the property, the land, the way it's done. Right now, it's just, oh, you know what, we had somebody come in, they had to say no, so let's change it so they can come in. That's not how you do zoning. That's, you have to look at the whole town. If what Chris is saying is that, oh, the town wants to know how to become business friendly, then you should open up to C1 and C2. That may not be a legitimate thing to do. But the board hasn't looked at it, they haven't reviewed it. If you're worried about density down in this part of town, look at the land. How much land do we even have down there for other uses? That kind of thing. But I don't, I don't think, I think the board got this, and I don't think they looked at some of the other possibilities of where other things could go, what's it going to look like, all that kind of things. You know, just because it's the southern part of Kingston doesn't mean that it shouldn't be given the same kind of attention, shall we say, to some of the other places in town. It's like, oh no, we don't want used vehicles, we don't want car sales up here. Maybe that's absolutely legitimate, we shouldn't, but it doesn't mean that more work should be done on something that's been on the books for a long time to protect how Kingston presents itself as you enter town. And I think certain businesses could go, and some of them might be the ones you're talking about based on how they wanted to be built, but there's nothing in here that addresses that.
Any further comment from the public?
Pam Brown, Kingston. I was just wondering about pre-existing businesses. If you had settled on 125 past landscapers' deep hole, there's a cluster of auto repair places. And the owner of Kingston Foreign Auto was here earlier, but he got called away. So I think he wanted to ask, you know, if you go near that particular area, they're right across the street from each other, and they're really close together. So would they be exempted from this, or, I think they're in-
Yeah, they'd be pre-existing.
Pre-existing is-
Because they're pre-existing. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I think that was his question. Thank you so much.
Any other comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any further discussion or motions from the board?
I think, just moving forward, the like businesses is, I think was the goal for us. I mean, I don't think it's just our motive that like businesses ties in a lot of businesses. I think I, my concern was the storage units. I don't want to see a cluster of them put in. That is the newest fad lately. I mean, they've moved away from that, but I think, even if we move forward in the future to change the other commercial districts, I like this because it protects us for now.
Although this doesn't protect you from this-
Storage units, right now-
Because that's not one of the listed, you know, uses-
They could say, well, if I can't build anything else there, I'll buy them, build storage units.
Well, no, this 1,000-foot separation applies to like businesses.
Only among vehicle trailer-
Only from the list that's right here. So if we, if we don't, if we don't allow some more flexibility of something that's not necessarily used car lots, but other businesses that are in this list, which I don't think we're in, I don't think the full intention was to prevent them from being anywhere. I think it was, I personally think it was prevented to make it, so it's not used car, used car, used car. But if a used car place wanted to be there, then a place that sells agricultural tractors, or then a place that sells trailers, you know, but I wasn't here back at that time, but I just think, I have more a concern of that, that it seems like storage units are the way to go, so anything that they can't find a use for, that's what they're going to put up.
And the wording on that, no?
Somebody could buy it all right now and put storage units clear, put it down south into town.
I guess to acknowledge Ellen's concerns, is there, what's the risk of waiting to do this? Are there, we know there's been one recent proposal that could not move forward because of the advice from council relative to this ordinance. What's the impact of waiting here?
And I think, I think the other aspect is-
God, we have no way to recharge that. We don't know how many people look at the site and think, I can't go there because I'm one of these uses. So there's no way of saying how, what is the impact? Is there immediate harm? I would say no, there is an immediate harm. I believe Lynn would say, yes, there is immediate harm, because she's had people tell her that they're going elsewhere. But I don't see that, because they never make it to the planning board.
And I think it does give us a chance to, to develop the things we had discussed about improving, you talked about this, we talked about stratum, places like that.
We talked about, like, LePage Auto has done, did a nice job when they're kind of more-
That except with landscaping requirements that we have, that we don't seem to apply to these spots.
Yeah, I was going to say, we have, we have a lot of standards that we, for whatever reasons, usually associated with the fact that they weren't constructing new buildings. They didn't get fully applied. So someone came in and said they wanted to change Dogger's home from home to a business. There was no new construction, and we didn't, the board didn't, as a board, say, yes, we're going to enforce the landscaping requirements we have in place right now, because it would have, it would have a detrimental impact on the size of that lot. That discussion happened. We have standards in site plan review that if they were applied to every one of those used car developments when they came in- came in, there would have been a different appearance. But that wasn't what happened.
So I guess my opinion is, I'd like to put this towards the voters, and if they're not comfortable with it, they can vote it down. If they are comfortable with it, they can vote in favor of it. So I'll make a motion to move Article 110 Commercial Zone, C2, Section 110.3 Permitted Uses K to the ballot as amended.
Is there a second?
C3.
I'll second.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Rob Trasolo. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Three in favor, two opposed. Moving on to Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.3 Permitted Uses O. Amending Article 110 Commercial District 3, Section 110.3 Permitted Uses O by adding the word warehouses to read O, wholesale, wholesale businesses and warehouses. Oh. Do we need a motion to move it's been asked to continue it? I would pick it out.
Yeah, we should continue.
Yeah. Is that a motion?
Second motion to continue.
Yes.
And you might just want to clarify why we're doing that.
So the motion to continue was a result of this particular item not making it to the notice to the public. So we had a motion by Chris Bashaw, and a second by Peter Coffin. All those in favor?
Motion, please, okay, seven.
Correct.
Can I ask a quick comment? When you move it, will this have the same changes as the previous one we talked about?
This is just the number seventeen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I understand, okay.
Very brief. All right, next up, thank you for reminding me. Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.5 Special Exceptions. Amending Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.5 Special Exceptions by replacing special exceptions handled by the zoning board of adjustments with a conditional use permit handled by the planning board. Change the language, property values to properties. Did we already talk about this?
This is...
Oh, it's the next one.
I think you can say that it's, it's identical wording to the C2.
I would like to say that, please. So using identical wording as was discussed in Commercial Zone, C2.
And I, and I, we can just get to the discussion point. I would add that we changed the wording, not specifically permitted, permitted, prohibited, to not specifically permitted or not specifically prohibited, as, as we did in the other reading of that.
Any comment from the public?
You guys are picking this as the same line as we're still...
But he's not tapping her window.
So we will open and close public comment. Any discussion or motion from the board? I feel like Peter already kind of made one.
Yeah, I, I made the motion to add the, sorry, I made the comment to add the same wording as we did on C2, not specifically permitted or not specifically prohibited. And with that amendment, I'll move the Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.5, amending special exceptions to be a constitutional use permit to the ballot, as it's said, as it's been amended here.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield.
But did one of them actually also want to say that using the word property doesn't imply that property values are not a reasonable...
Yeah, the motion, I just put it in like, for the discussion, but we don't vote.
Yeah, well, it was, it was amended the motion, yeah. Okay, yeah, we'll amend the motion to include the...
Well, no, just to keep it in the last one, we just said, as a point of the motion for the discussion, that the removal... The remove, the removal of the language of property values does not necessarily move the, the intent of property values being included with properties.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.6 Lot Regulations B setbacks 1B. Amending Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.6 Lot Regulations B setbacks 1B to remove the words zone and change it to use. Amending the language as follows. B residential setback, side or rear only fifty feet when abutting a residential use.
Just so folks know, clarification for this was that should you have a pre-existing residential use within the boundaries of the, of the commercial zone, that the buffer requirements applied to that residential use, the way it was currently, currently written, it wouldn't necessarily to apply to a, they wouldn't have to have the, the commercial residential buffers unless that home was on the edge of the residential zone and attached to that. So this is to protect any potential residences that could be fully surrounded within that commercial use to be afforded the same buffer protections as a residential zone.
And it also... One, so that it, all three commercial zones have the same wording for setbacks.
Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll open and close public comment. Any further discussion or motions by the board?
I'll make a motion to move Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.6 Lot Regulations B setbacks, comma, one point B to the ballot as amended.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.6 Lot Regulations B setback 1C. This would be to amend to Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.6 Lot Regulations B setbacks C to change twenty-five to thirty feet, amending the language as follows. C otherwise, front thirty feet, side twenty feet, rear twenty feet. And again, I believe this was just to keep it consistent with what is in the other zones.
Right.
Any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll open and close public comment. Any further discussion or motions by the board?
I'll move Article 110 Commercial Zone, C3, Section 110.6 Lot Regulations B setbacks one point C to the ballot as amended.
Do we have a second? Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. All right, now we're moving on to Article 203, the Kingston Flood Plane Development Ordinance. I didn't know I was gonna have to read a grid.
You probably could just read.
I'm just gonna reuse the new language. All right, so amending the following sections of Article 203 Kingston Flood Plane Development Ordinance. Oppose new language. Under C, base flood elevation, BFE, means the elevation of surface water resulting from the base flood. Under development, adding language at the end or storage of equipment or materials. Flood opening, an opening in a foundation or enclosure wall that allows automatic entry or exit of floodwaters. C FEMA technical bulletin one, openings in foundation walls and walls of enclosures. N, proposing to strike functionally dependent use means a use which cannot perform its intended purpose unless it's located or carried out in the proximity to water. The term only includes, the term includes only docking and port facilities that are necessary for the loading and unloading of cargo or passengers in shipbuilding or repair facilities, but does not include long-term, term storage or related manufacturing facilities. For manufactured homes, including a sentence at the end, this includes manufactured homes located in manufactured home park or subdivision. Adding a new definition, manufactured home park or subdivision means a parcel or contiguous parcels of land divided into two or more manufactured home lots for rent or sale.
Can I just, maybe we could...
Yeah.
In context, for the public that's here, these changes are required by FEMA, by the federal government, to the National Flood Insurance Program Ordinance that we have adopted. If we don't adopt these, the town loses its allowance to be in the program. If, is there anyone here that tonight that came for this, for this particular ordinance? Because this is, this is, this is a ton of things she's going to have to read for no purpose. We, we have to do this, or we get thrown out of the program. So we're going to do it, because people in town purchase their flood insurance, through, some of them, through the National Flood Insurance Program. And it's painful...
Thank you.
To hear you read all of this.
It is so painful.
It is, it's painful. We have no opportunity to not do this, but it does have to go to town meeting vote, so we have to make the information, make, make the information available. And we have, I have to tell you, Robin, he did a beautiful job of doing this. But if there's no disagreement from anyone, these are the changes that we have to make, and we're going to put them on the ballot.
By show of hands, does anyone in the public have objections or comments?
I don't know.
We will then open and close public comment. I thank you, Glenn Greenwood.
Because you, it just is...
Because it is...
I will make a motion to move Article 203 Kingston Flood Plane Development Ordinance to the ballot as amended, provided a, a, a direction for those who present a motion to the ballot.
I'll second, yeah, I can second that.
Who second?
Steve, Steve goes first.
All right. Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Steve Padfield. All those in favor?
Aye. And as a, and Glenn is a... And either Glenn or perhaps Ellen Faulkner can answer this as the moderator. Is there a way we can, you put this, you put this, your comments basically, that this is required in order for us to continue in the flood insurance program, that these editorial changes are required, these changes are required by the federal government, so that people who get a stack of papers, this is...
I don't think there's anything we can, we can, we can't legally put it on the ballot. We can put it out as a letter and an editorial urging people, but as we've shown in the past, we can't force people to participate in government before going to the booth.
No, I understand, I understand that, but, but usually law articles have a brief explanation of what they...
I'm not sure we're doing that anymore.
But we stopped doing that.
Okay.
So there, there wouldn't be that opportunity, other than the posted, we could have this said, these five pages of amendments are required to remain in the flood, the National Flood Control Program.
Well, that's...
But that would only be if anybody looks at the, the posted materials at the, at the voting cycle. That'd be the only time you'd see them.
Okay, so they're not gonna see all this, they're just gonna see an article...
Oh, they're gonna see it all.
They're gonna see it all. The question, this is gonna be a lengthy ballot.
Page three.
So I mean, it, it, it doesn't, it's not a bad thing for us to do PR before a time meeting that says, you know, with relation to, to the ballot question, whatever it becomes, the town will be eliminated from the National Flood Control Program if these amendments are not accepted. But that would be something the board would have to undertake to the end. And we could certainly post it on the website. Because it's a law.
Okay, I just...
It's tough, the further they get down a lengthy ballot. Let's face it, a lot of people don't, there's a lot of folks that don't read, especially the zoning and planning articles prior to showing up, and I...
I understand that they don't read the articles, and I'm, I'm just wondering if, if those that get their, whether it says to amend the articles of this to comply with requirements of such and such, as follows.
The, the National Flood Insurance Program has provided sample language that tries to bull up this everybody, but it really just takes very long words. And so people, if they're confounded, some people are just gonna say, no. And that would be really detrimental if enough people got confounded and just said, no.
Joe Abbot's looking at the ballot, seeing flood zone is, yeah, I'm with you on that. No.
So perhaps at the next meeting, we talk about what PR might look like?
Yeah, I mean, it's a discussion beyond this, what you need to do here for the, for the public here, but it is a discussion that warrants more interaction.
So is the whole, is the whole was changing? I mean, you're not gonna have that first paragraph that you probably have in there now, is that...
What, you're getting the knock?
Come on out.
He knocking?
Yes.
A lot of them.
Just pick up.
He was knocking on the door.
But, you know, you have, you have like a, a thing at the beginning that kind of talks about that it's important and, you know, you have to read it, but that's not gonna be on the ballot.
All the, it would just be the ballot question, are you in favor of all of them? And then the list of the areas in the ordinance that are amended. It is gonna be an ugly list.
Do, do you feel the need to amend that first section at all, so you can put it in? I'm just saying, that's the only way anyone's gonna know that...
No, I, I, I guess, could, could we just...
Mic drop.
Yeah, could we amend that first, you know, amending the following sections of Article 203 Kingston Flood Plane Development Ordinance to remain in compliance with flood plane, you know, FEMA flood...
We could make that a part of the ballot question.
I, I...
You're absolutely...
Because if, if they're gonna read any part of it, it may be the first sentence.
It might be the first sentence, yes.
So do we need to amend the motion to include, oh, no, we would need to...
No, it's just, that, that's, that's the actual construction of the ballot.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And the construction of the ballot question, could you just say that?
So I, I think, I think that's...
I, I don't either. I don't either. It allows, the law mandates that we say things like, if it is recommended by the planning board, that, that first line, say that, but why, why can't we just say, in order to stay in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program? That will at least alert people as to what they're doing with the S or no.
You should have people there who will announce what is at the podiums. That would be the idea, I guess, of course.
Moderator?
All right, I'm gonna move along in the spirit of time, because we've got till ten o'clock to get through these, is how I'm reading our own. 10 o'clock to get through these, is how I'm reading our own.
Well, these are, these are zoning public, this is zoning public here. Are you really going to do that?
10:30, yeah.
Yeah.
Article 204 Innovative Zoning, amending Article 204 Innovative Zoning to be renamed to Conservation Open Space Zoning. Anything more we need to say about that?
No.
Any comment from the public? None, we'll open and close, come back to the board for discussion and/or motion.
Move Article 204 Innovative Zoning to rename it to be Conservation Open Space Zoning to the ballot.
Motion by Peter Coffin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Bashaw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Last two unanimously. Article 206 Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance, Section 206.4 ADU Requirements E, amending Article 206 Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance, Section 204, 206.4 ADU Requirements E, to read as follows, the size of the ADU shall not be smaller than 600 square feet, the maximum size of the ADU shall not exceed 50% of the size of the gross living area, AKA GLA, heated or air-conditioned space, as defined in the town's tax card of the primary single family dwelling. Amended March 8, 2022. In the case where a home is smaller than 1,800 square feet, the ADU may be no larger than 600 square feet. Single-family dwelling units that are smaller than 1,200 square feet are not permitted to create an accessory dwelling unit. The reason for this is that when, when, for this is that an accessory dwelling unit in a structure smaller than 1,200 square feet would be more than 50% of the size of the existing structure and no longer deemed to be accessory to the primary unit. Accessory dwelling units located in a detached structure shall comply with these same size requirements. Anything further?
Is that language supposed to be struck, Glenn?
Red?
Yeah.
That's new language.
Okay.
Any comment from the public?
I thought, I thought the goal was to create the consistency of the 50% across the whole spectrum. That's what, and that's what I.
I don't know if you changed it out to the hearing, but.
Yeah, I think, I think when we.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did change that out, take that out.
So change it to a strike through?
Yeah, that, that's supposed to be a strike through.
Yes.
Because the goal was to make it an equal playing field for all homes that wanted to do that, because currently a 1,200 square foot home could have a 600 square foot ADU, which was 50%, so we felt it was appropriate to allow that same threshold for all properties.
So then we would have to take out more than just what was in red, or no?
No, just the red is supposed to be struck through and the only, the change should be, ADU should not, red would be struck through and the 50% is the, the change in red. So did that not make it notice properly, so we have to continue it to the next?
I would say we should continue.
I think we should continue it, yeah. So I'll make a motion that we continue that to the January 2nd meeting with, with the changes mentioned with the strike through.
Right, I'll second that.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alan?
You guys may have amended this, and I may have missed it, because, you know, someone doesn't always talk into the mic, but at the hearing you guys had the number 49%.
Yes, that, and we had talked about that, because initially he was saying, no, because we have to keep it, you know, less than, I go, well, anything, anything less than 100% makes it subordinate.
So I just.
Because in a house that is, say, 200 square feet, if you have an entirely into ADU, you end up with 200 square feet each, you basically have a duplex. But since we already are allowing that, you, you got it right when you said that it was structures smaller than 1,200 square feet, it would be more than 50%. So we're saying that.
Well, the structure smaller than 1,200 can't happen.
Can't have, can't have it, right.
1,200 by, by this loss as you can.
You can. So it can be 50% in those cases. And we thought, because we were at 30% for, for the other houses, so we, we upped it to, got up to 50%. And the idea what Glenn had originally was that like a 2,000 square foot house, it should be 49% to make it sure it was accessory, is subordinate to the, the larger unit. And so basically now you can have a duplex with an ADU, because you have, if you take a 2,000 square foot house and divide it in half and make.
Not, not if it's internal.
It's internal, I'm talking.
If it's internal, it.
It's internal, you'll have a 2,000 square foot house, stays 2,000 square feet, and you have a two, 1,000 square foot units.
But it can't become a duplex, because there has to be, there has to be attaching.
No, well, I'm saying in terms, in terms of being, one of being accessory or another, the, the connection rules changed, you didn't, used to be not, you used to be not.
But the, no, no, but the thing is, if you split into a duplex, this is no longer half, because you've made it 50 and 50, it can only be 50% of the 100% of what still exists on the primary. You can't take a 1,200 square foot house and make 600 of it an internal thing, you can add a 600 square feet to it to make an accessory dwelling unit, because, no, because if, because if you changed it, it would be 100% versus 100%.
No, it's, it's 100%, it's percentage of the original GLA, because if you have an accessory dwelling unit that's added on.
You can't subtract from the primary to count towards the new.
I don't think that's.
It can only be, it can only be, but what you're saying, it can be 50% of the.
Of the primary GLA.
Primary.
Initial GLA.
Correct, so if you have a 2,000 square foot home, you could have a 1,000 square foot ADU.
Correct.
But you can't, so you can't take away from your 2,000 square foot home.
Yes, you can.
You still have to have the primary. No, you can make, like, you can, you can convert, you can convert an unfinished basement, but you can't just cut your house in half and say, this is an ADU now.
Why?
Why?
Because that would make it, that would make, that would make your two properties being equal.
Yeah.
That's his point.
It would, it would be, you now have an ADU that is 100% the size of your, of the primary residence.
Of the primary residence. And we say that, as defined by the town's tax card, so we're saying, the maximum size of the ADU shall not exceed 50% of the size of the gross living area, as defined in the tax card of the primary single-family dwelling. If you have 8,000, if you have a 2,000 square foot house, you can propose a 1,000 square foot accessory dwelling.
But it doesn't allow you to cut off, you can add 1,000 square feet in an unfinished basement.
No.
Or you can, or you can add on to the building.
I can, I can make half my building, half of my home, uh, uh, ADU, put it in the door. You got an ADU on one side, I got another 1,000 square foot on the other.
No, if you have, if you. Well, if you had a 2,000 square foot home.
Yeah.
The only way you could subtract from that is you could say, make, you, your final calculation would have to be that, your final living space of the primary residence and the ADU, the ADU can only be 50% of that, you can't cut it in half and then say, okay, now it's 50%, because now you're actually at 100% of the primary living.
How about that 1,200 square feet? We determined that it's 600 square foot ADU.
Nothing says, nothing says you're guaranteed that it is internal within the confines of what you already have. An attached ADU means you could put on an addition to your house, and that's an attached ADU. A detached ADU means you could build a barn or a garage with the extra on there, you don't just get to automatically split it in half and call it an ADU, because that would be a duplex, that's, that's not the calculation.
Isn't that how it works today, though? It's just one-third of the GLA, so all we're doing is putting a new number in.
But, so, so the ADUs that have come to us, people have added additional finished space to accommodate it. Nobody's come in and said, I, no, because you can't take an 1,800 square foot home, and currently under, currently under the law, the 30% under the rules, you can't take an 1,800 square foot house, omit 600 square feet of it for your ADU, because then you're left with 1,200 and 600, which would have put you at 50%. By changing it to this, you could do that in this scenario, but you can't take, you can't, you, you don't get to, it, it, the final result has to be the 50%.
When you, when you, when you subtract, as Alan's talking about, well, now your primary unit is how big, and then you have to do 50% of that size.
Correct, so, yeah, so if you were, if you're taking space that already exists, that goes against your calculation number, you don't just get to split in half, that's not accurate.
Then shouldn't it be the final gross living area?
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
Yeah, I gotta say, I think we should clarify that, because I think you are absolutely anticipating that that's what we do. The irony here is, you're the person, Chris, who finds.
Who would find the loophole?
Who finds this loophole and tells us, no, I can absolutely do that. And that is not what we want the case to be.
Well, and it says the ADU shall not exceed 50% of the gross living area, so whether you're.
As defined in the town's tax card.
If I look at my tax card, it's going to say I have a 2,000, I don't know what it
says, 2,000 square foot home, and I'm going to say, good, I can make it 1,000.
But then your, then your tax card will say, my home is now been my, it's been subtracted, so it's not way more than 50%.
But it doesn't tell you, it doesn't say it. And I've done it with permission.
Nor do I recall this being part of the discussion initially when we talked about.
It wasn't.
It, it's a valid point, but another valid point may be that, these are getting changed all over the place, and they're getting changed in the other way, is what I see in every single town. I've seen them rewritten in 15 different towns where they're, they're loving ADUs and they want more and more of them because of the housing crisis. Just something to think about, why we're redoing.
Well, this is, this is increasing the.
Yeah, this is increasing.
This is increasing the size of the ADUs.
What we don't want to do is allow, we don't want it to, it can't be more, can't be even, it can't be even. It can't be even.
So what, what if we, what if we made a change and continued to the next one to clarify that, that potential loophole where it would say, as defined in the town's tax card, after the creation of the ADU?
It could be, yeah, the size of the final gross living area after the creation of the ADU.
Yes, because that, because, yeah, because the last thing you want, you don't want a 2,000 square foot home turned into a 1,000, 1,000 square foot home and a 1,000 square foot ADU, because you created, you created an ADU that is 100% the size of your primary living residence.
And I just.
Which you're, then you would, you would essentially be allowing every home to turn into a duplex immediately.
What is the best way to accomplish that? The best way to accomplish that, are, are we saying that to do an ADU, we're not ever allowing you to reduce the interior space of your existing?
No, you can, as long as the final numbers don't exceed 50% of the primary, the primary dwelling versus the accessory dwelling unit. So if you had a 2,000 square foot home, or what's a, like I said, if you had that, if you had that 1,800 square foot home, you could take 600 feet of that to make your ADU, which would reduce your primary down to 1,200 square feet, and then you would be in compliance with the 50%.
So it's the final gross living area, blah, 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 single-family dwelling, after the creation of the ADA, is what you said, Chris.
ADU.
I said ADA, didn't I? Yeah, that would be wrong. Watching too much Law &amp; Order.
So there was already a motion to continue, and you're.
Yeah, so, so this, this language has to be.
Has to be.
Add before it gets re-noticed.
Yes, yeah. So I guess I'll, I'll motion that we continue this article to the January 2nd meeting with the amended language to close that loophole.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second, Dan.
All right, so again, motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin, all those in favor?
Aye.
And just a technicality thing, did you guys vote on the 50%? Because I tell you, vote on the 49%.
Yeah, they, they, we voted.
We did.
I said, I did watch the 21st. Yeah, I did watch that, I just watched.
Article. Yeah, yeah. 301 Building and Building Lots, Section 301.1 Lot Regulations B. Proposals to amend this section by removing, every building lot shall have no more than one single-family home or one two-family dwelling thereon. The joining together of two separate structures of any kind for the purpose of having them meet the definition of a two-family home is prohibited. A two-family mobile home on a single chassis shall also be prohibited. Adopted 3/4/1963, amended 3/276, and again on March 11, 1980. And then there's an editorial change as well that won't be made until this is voted on. Any further comment on that?
Just by explanation, the, the building lot regulation applied, all of these requirements are in the individual zones, and this is in the building lot requirements, and it applies to all building lots, so you would not be allowed under this article to build a commercial structure, or an apartment house, or anything else that didn't meet that on any lot in town. So this was obviously not being followed, and it just needed to go, and it, it was brought up by an attorney during a hearing on another case, and it had been brought up before, and we had been ignoring it, but when attorneys tell you, you can't ignore your own regulations, you, you got to take, take note of it and change it, otherwise you're, you're going to end up in legal trouble all over again.
Any comment from the public?
Virginia Morris, Main Street, Kingston. I'm sorry that I did not listen to your discussion about all of these things at your planning board meetings. I do not understand why what Peter just said. I would like an explanation that I can understand of why this is being removed.
Oh, because it, it was applying to all building lots in town, it was under 301, which is the building lot requirements. And for example, if, if I wanted to build a hotel in Kingston, or All-American System, or something like that, technically All-American System Living on their lot, it says, every building lot shall have no more than one single-family home or one two-family dwelling thereon. I wouldn't be able to build that. So essentially, those items are regulated and already regulated in the individual zoning districts. Right.
So are you saying this is a repeat from a, of?
It's leftover from when the entire town was rural residential, and that's what the rural residential requirement was. When we tell you what you can or can't build, like the historic districts have requirements of what you can have on a lot, and single-family residential, or single-family agriculture has requirements of what you're allowed to put on there. And it, it shouldn't be in a general ordinance about building lots, you know.
This was added in 1963. So essentially what's happening is the town has ignored this, because it's covered elsewhere, because if the town actually followed this, it would not allow anything, even in, even in zones where this type of construction could be, you know, multifamily or, you know.
Are you, are you saying that this is defined in each one of the sections?
Yeah, yeah, what happened, this went in in 1963, before the zoning ordinances were written, when those zoning ordinances were written, each, each zone had its own requirements. So this should have been, when zoning went into effect, this particular article should have been taken out, because it doesn't apply to anything other than rural residential.
And if I look in rural residential, will I find this language?
You'll find language about what you're allowed to have, which is a single-family or two-family, and other businesses you can have in rural residential, you know, there's quite a lot of things that are permitted in rural residential.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I got it.
Any further comment from the public? Any further comment from the public?
This is just basically to make the meeting go longer, but one of the reasons why this went in, this is just kind of a funny story, is that somebody built two houses on a lot and then connected them with a little walkway to make it a two-family. So that's why, I mean, years ago, decades ago, you can still find it in town, but that's why this originally went in, so somebody couldn't make basically two single-family residential homes, join them together and go, oh, it's two families.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any further discussion or motion by the board?
Okay, I'll move that the-
Yeah, that's just for the editorial change.
So what do we need for the article three oh one, move the article three oh one, building and building lots being deleted? Yeah, we just, that, that article three oh one, three oh one point one lot regulations be removed. Be moved, be moved to, no, wait a second, to move to the ballot, yeah.
Was that a second, Chris?
Yes.
Motion by Peter Kaufman, second by Chris Boshaw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And we had said we were gonna vote for all amended, amended changes, right, to put there.
Yeah.
The last, right? Are we on the last one? Yes. Article three oh four, industrial developments. Amending article three oh four, industrial developments by removing this ordinance in its entirety, we have a page reference with notation about it being removed for historical reference. Any further discussion, or any further comment on that? Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? Seeing none, we will open and close.
I'm trying to find my notes in my book.
Open public comment.
I sure am gonna make sure my husband doesn't watch this meeting. Why are we removing this? Why would the town not be involved in having an app about industrial developments?
This required it to actually go to public meeting. Somebody came in, you know, industrial, this is an industrial zone, the planning board wouldn't be allowed to even hear it. It would have to go to the selectmen to be, next March, for public hearing. And Glenn, you can give the background of why this was put in, I think, easier.
I want to turn the page itself.
Yes.
Three oh four.
And, and no other development, residential or commercial, requires a town vote at a public, at a town meeting.
This is a process that existed previous, allowing, sorry, I mean, it's on, but it's a long ways away. This is a, a, a section of the zoning ordinance that's been there, but it, it implies a process that isn't statutorily allowed. Simply going to the Board of Selectmen to do a zoning provision isn't legal. The Board of Selectmen don't have that authority. So having, having that here makes no sense.
If, if you wanted a, a industrial use outside the industrial zone, the statute, the state statutes require you would apply to the zoning board of administration, adjustment, I mean, for the, for a variance. This is telling them, instead of doing this, you go to the selectmen, get the selectmen to put it on a town ballot, after, after they decided they were gonna recommend this outside of the ZBA process or the normal regulatory process, they would then put it on the ballot to allow industrial use outside the industrial zone.
So why wouldn't you strike after being recommended by the selectmen? Industrial development, put it in the existing industrial zone must have the approval of the town.
And, and why would any proposed development need to go to the town ballot when we have a system, actually, let now, and I think she's got a better answer to this.
This was originally put in when there was no commercial zoning and the industrial zone looked like it was beginning to spread out a little bit.
I'm sorry, this was originally put in because there was no commercial zoning and the industrial zone looked like it was spreading a little bit. So this was put in so that in order for the planning board to be able to prove, approve anything industrial outside of the industrial zone, it would have to go get approval by the Board of Selectmen and get a vote of the town. It was put in a long, long time ago. And now when we have commercial zoning and industrial zones that specify what's allowed in the zones, this is really not necessary anymore.
So if I wanna put an industrial development somewhere in town that is not within the existing industrial zone, my action is to go to the ZBA?
Correct.
Thank you.
You go, you go to the planning board first, Glenn, it's, it, it's not allowed. You have to get a variance.
Any further comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and return to the board for discussion or a motion.
Yeah, I'll move article three oh one, sorry, three oh four, industrial developments as to remove this.
Do we have a second, Peter? And then Steve. Motion by Peter Kaufman, second by Steve Patfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then it looks like we have two, no?
Just, if there's an update on the historic district one, if not, we just-
Okay. Any updates on the draft language for planning board review in order to move the description and permitted uses in historic district one and two?
Yes. So the board asked two things last meeting about this issue. One was to find out from Chinburg what the heck their progress was or wasn't for their proposed development. And I did have a chance to talk with their project engineer who indicated that they're going to apply in December for the January meeting for designing for the process, but we don't have that application yet. So that's, I like Paul and I believe in what he tells me he's gonna do it, but we haven't seen an application yet. That left us in the odd position after speaking with the Historic District Commission about leaving the language in place that they're not. But that's really ambiguous language and not something that they really wanted to see go another year without being addressed somehow. So Huddy and I are working on kind of an odd zoning ordinance that would just allow multifamily use on the sand, the former Sandborn Seminary property. It's, it's, we, we would have to have that language by the middle of this month posted for the January second meeting. I don't know if we're gonna accomplish that.
So just one point, or do we probably just officially close the public hearing on all the amendments to the hour?
Right.
Well, aren't you doing, you can't, can't grab one?
But not, not as important, officially close the hearing and just discuss whether or not we can move the public hearing.
Sorry, sorry.
So does anyone wanna make that motion? Do we need a motion for that?
No, you can just close.
Just close.
Close the public hearing.
All right, we will officially close public hearing.
For the zoning amendments.
For the zoning amendment changes discussed this evening.
So the end, the end result is that the Warren article that we would present to the board is one that basically, I hate to say this out loud, spot zones. But Huddy is comfortable with the concept as long as we show why there is general benefit to that action. And that's what she, she and I are developing those parameters. And I'm not actually working with Huddy at this point, I'm working with her assistant and Carrie, but that's the only thing there. But that's the update, there is nothing for me to give you tonight, so.
Okay. So then that brings us to the recreational campgrounds and camping parks. You worked on this, right, Glenn?
Huddy did this entirely.
Before we move on, I was just gonna say that, was there any discussion when you had with Huddy and, and associate about the fact that Chinburg had to file for the, I can't remember what the, the state law is that allows for restoration of historic places and getting delayed tax money, all, all that kind of application had to be made for the tax relief that they're getting for that proposal. And so that doesn't count towards having presented some kind of proposal for use, I can't, so this is-
He's gonna do his informal discussions with the historic district. So there is, there is no, there is no action on his part that has protected his interests from any changes in zone.
Is there any protection for us if they sell it, if we make these changes? That's my biggest concern.
The concern, well, we're spots and parcels, so in this instance, we can say whatever we want.
Okay.
Proposal, and our proposal is to make it so specific to that activity that nothing else could go there. And then the townspeople either accept it or they don't.
Cuz essentially, the, the townspeople through the two districts when the school decided to sell it, like, they agreed to it with the, to sell it with the intention of that it would be used for that particular use.
Any further discussion on that? All right, moving on then to recreational campgrounds and camping parks.
Yeah, so this kind of all just came about with some potential enforcement issues with some things going on in town. There were, I think really the, the big catalyst came from people that were staying in a camping setting or trying to claim residency from the town and then apply for benefits that the town essentially has an unfunded liability to fulfill. And then, so we just, we asked legal to take a look at our campground ordinances in general, and so legal came up with some recommendations to move the town ballot. Obviously, this would only, you know, any changes apply wouldn't, wouldn't affect those already in current existence under approved uses, they'd be grandfathered under that. Those that, you know, were looking, seeking for expansion of uses or, you know, new site plans, or if you had a completely new campground development, they would obviously be subject to a lot of these. So this was, like I said, this was, this was all created by town council with a recommendation of, you know, having, having this go to public hearing and then look at it for moving into Warren article to just fill deficiencies in the town's, town's liability to, you know, the way certain, certain, certain campgrounds, you know, camping facilities may operate.
Any further comment or did folks have any changes, thoughts, suggestions?
Well, we had discussed this before about what zones, and I think we decided rural residential and what else was it, commercial? See, the commercial zones or not? I think it was commercial.
So it looks like-
Yeah, go ahead.
From Lynn's note that her suggestion at least was all three commercial zones and rural residential.
And rural residential.
That's what I thought we-
Yeah, so if anyone wanted to create a campground within any three of the commercial zones, as long as they met all the criteria or the rural residential that they could construct, a new campground could be constructed.
Right, and it said that we would have to make changes to the, those articles. But presumably that would, that would only occur after this article four oh two was enacted or we would have to add it to article four oh two saying that those are the zones that are allowed or what. Because we, obviously what I'm, what I'm getting at is, here's two actions. One is that this has gotta be moved to a hearing four oh two, then we'd also have to create hearings to amend rural residential, C one, C two, and C three to add-
I guess are they, well, if they're, they're, they're not expressly prohibited now, so if they, do you think we'd have to do separate language for all of that, Glenn, to make that allowed?
I think it makes more sense.
Yeah.
If it's allowed.
Yeah, but you'd wanna make it, would you wanna make it, would it be only contingent upon the passage of this?
I, I would think so.
Yeah, we could, we could structure it to all be one Warren article.
So I know you've been looking forward to more work.
The Warren article could literally be the passage of this and three paragraphs.
And it would, upon the passage of this, it would also amend-
Yes.
The following zones to, to be-
The permitted uses in the following zones.
So, yeah, I think we could do it all as one, but, cuz you, you don't, you don't want them passing without each other.
Oh, no.
Exactly, it should all be one question.
All right, so would you feel comfortable drafting that appropriately or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And, and this still has to, this, this one still has to go before public hearing. So this would, this would go to the January second public, public hearing if the board feels comfortable moving into that.
And, but we don't have the final wording to, to move it to-
We can still, if, if we have, if we have final wording by our next meeting, we can move it as long as we make the news required.
I will have that additional wording for you to look at at the next Tuesday's meeting.
Okay.
So maybe you just continue this discussion till next Tuesday.
You say next Tuesday, but the-
Because our public hearing-
It is next.
Any comment from the public?
You're carrying this?
Seeing none, does anyone want to, we'll close.
It's not, we don't really need a motion at this point, it's just the board wants Glenn to come up with some language and our next meeting we'd move it.
Next meeting we'll move it to-
Next meeting we would move it to go to public hearing.
This isn't a public.
Correct, this isn't a public hearing on this one.
Okay, forget that. Next, we wanna do the acceptance of the November twenties, the November seventh meeting minutes.
Yeah, I'll move that we accept the November seventh minutes as presented.
Motion by Peter Kaufman, second by Steve Patfield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Correspondence, is this it? Okay. All right. So- All right, so there is a, an email from the Board of Selectmen that reads, Benson's Cafe LLC, Sean Benson has made application to the Division of Enforcement for a restaurant, beverage, wine, liquor license under the provisions of RSA one seventy-eight colon twenty-one. This establishment is located at one sixty Main Street, United. Uh, pursuant to RSA five forty-one dash A colon thirty-nine, the New Hampshire Liquor Commission hereby provides the city or town of Kingston with notice of the application and informs you that you may submit data, views, comments, or other materials or evidence with respect to the potential issuance of the liquor license. The information will be taken into consideration by the Division of Enforcement and Licensing prior to its recommendation to the Liquor Commission for approval or denial of the license. Sincerely, Mark C.
Armiganian.
Armiganian, Chief Division of Enforcement, thank you.
So is this a, a current use that is getting a new owner, or is it...
No, it's, it looks like they're looking to apply for a liquor license, which that really doesn't have any effect with us, but if they get the approval for the liquor license, we should tell them that if this, if this is, if you're gonna be looking to possibly expand hours of use that we have on file as an approved use, it may, it may go down that road where they need to, you know, cause if, if they're looking to have a liquor license, if they're gonna potentially expand it to dinner, I don't know what's on their file of whether they're just listed as breakfast and lunch during limited hours, but if they're gonna have expanded hours, I think it'd be, it'd probably be beneficial if the board just sent them something, hey, we, you know, we received this letter of your application for thing, obviously, the liquor license has nothing to do with us, but if this changes your approved hours and things that are on there, that they're gonna have to, you know, potentially come back for the board for some level of review.
When did we, when did that even happen? When did Benson's Cafe get approved?
Two years ago maybe?
Yeah.
Has it been that recent?
Well, I think they bought...
It was Josiah's.
Right, I think they just went in and, right, took over that license for Josiah's.
And so that was very good.
It just became a transition. Yes, correct. Uh, so I, I don't know what's actually in their property file of if they're just limited to breakfast and lunch, or if Josiah's ever had dinner that was on there, but I, I think it'd just be, I don't want, you know, the last thing you want to go through the whole process and be like, hey, we're good to go, and then we chime in. So with us getting this notification, I think we should send them something that you could be subject to additional review or site plan, you know, depending on what type of changes we're looking at. What's that?
Parking, parking's problem at nighttime, I think.
Yeah.
Robin, will you remind me to look at the...
Yeah, yeah, in the, in the evening, especially when Smitty's Wrestling Barn's going and all that other stuff, there, there are definitely parking issues over there in the evening.
Any other?
I'm uncomfortable with that.
Businesses?
But maybe they just wanna serve limousines and bloody areas.
I may have to breakfast and lunch.
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Right, that's plausible.
I don't know.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to go inspect that.
Uh, barring any additional business, this means...